All of, uh, all three, that's a type of rat to compare, I'm sorry.
Okay, alright.
Um, so on that one, we had given the valuation under appeal.
Right.
And then we were, uh, that one might have been no change actually.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Lynch, yeah, that one was a no change.
So those were three dollar damage.
Right, okay.
In the county, um, seven thirty-five on the avenue, the eight ninety-three highway forty-eight and the three hundred west Pennsylvania. Um, of the three, we changed the Roanoke Avenue dollar and the Pennsylvania Street dollar. But the appellant agreed to the no change for the highway forty.
Okay, very good.
I'm sorry, that was not a rat to compare. Those are no changes.
Okay, no worries. Any other questions or comments from any of the E and R board members? If not, uh, if it's your pleasure, and I don't see anything wrong with it, um, we can approve all at the same time if that's what you'd like to do. And we have, you have, we have them listed, uh, in your pack.
Sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I do have one, um, decision that was not on the original agenda item.
Uh-huh.
Uh, Tony Rollins and I had a pre-hearing conference with, um, some appellants we had at Board of Enor last year.
Right.
That was scheduled to go to the North Carolina Property Tax Commission.
Mm-hmm.
And during that pre-hearing conference on Friday, they provided some information that we had not previously submitted, um, some contract information about some repairs. And we were able to come to an agreement of value with them. Um, so by adopting this consent decision for the tax year twenty twenty-five, also allows us to adjust their value that was under appeal for the tax year twenty twenty-four. Um, and I will read that information to you.
Sure.
Um, the appellants were David and Denise Savage, um, with an address of two seventy Davis Smith Road, Roanoke Rapids, parcel number zero nine zero six three seven four. The valuation under appeal was sixty thousand four hundred. The adjusted value will be fifty-three thousand one hundred. As an explanation, they, uh, gave us some roof estimates for the damage that they have on, on the roof of their house. With the agreement that when they have those repairs done, they will notify the tax department of those repairs and will adjust the value back at that time.
Okay, um, any questions or comments from my colleagues? I guess what we need to do is, um, modify any, any motion. You probably need to modify to include what he just said with that, um, if that's your pleasure. Okay, any questions or comments? If not, what is your pleasure in regards to the consent or decision of value appeals, including the last one he just mentioned?
Go ahead.
Good, move forward.
Okay, motion made by, um, Ms. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Webb and the further, uh, questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, back to you, Mr. Lynch.
Alright, thank you. Um, my second agenda item is evaluation appeal parcel, um, one-two-zero-three-eight-eight-one.
Mr. Mr. Lynch, I'm sorry, before you do that, come up here and be sworn if you don't mind. Left hand on the Bible raised to the right. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, as it be God?
I did.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Alright, so, uh, setting the look for the board today, parcel one-two-zero-three-eight-eight-one, belonging to Edger and Carolyn Stanfield. Um, I've given you a agenda, uh, cover sheet. It was supported information on the request of the board. Um, hopefully you've been able to read it. It's kind of more like a timeline. So if you have any questions before you proceed, I'll be happy to answer any questions about the summary information at the time before we proceed. Alright, um, well, the appellant, uh, Mrs. Stanfield is with us today, and I think she has some evidence to present to you. I'm gonna help her pass that out. And then she'll have her opportunity to speak to the board, and I'll be available.
Okay, alright. Ms. Stanfield, good morning. Thank you for being with us. Please come up here and do you swear or you want to be affirmed?
I swear.
Okay, alright, thank you so much. Left hand on your Bible raised to the right. Do you, um, solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to, uh, give in this matter is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, as it be God?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Did you get one matter, please?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, Ms. Stanfield, just before you start talking, um, I want to run something by you. Um, I know that the, um, I know that our tax department has talked to you about the values of your property. And, um, and I know that they had come to, um, you know, your property was valued initially, um, I don't know, somewhere around one twelve, one twelve thousand one hundred. Then it was reduced to ninety-seven thousand two hundred. Um, let, let, let me, let me just finish my statement, then I'll give you an opportunity to talk, okay? Um, Mr. Eckert, who works in his office, had come back to, uh, back to your house and, uh, and presented this to you and explained to you why it was reduced to the ninety-seven-two. And of course, and this is my point I want to make to you. Uh, I think you relate to Mr. Eckert that you didn't want to sign it because the tax assessor hadn't signed it. And, uh, and my question to you is, the tax assessor has agreed to the ninety-seven-two. Um, and if, uh, would you be willing to sign if he's willing to sign the ninety-seven-two?
No, sir.
Okay, alright, that clears that, then go ahead.
The reason I'm here...
And, and also too, let me just say this, Ms. Stanfield. We need to stay on point with this. This had, this is all about your property, um, and the one hundred and twelve thousand, you know, uh, in dispute, you know. That's what it's all about. It's not about anything else, so just stay on the subject. And if you get off subject, I'm gonna have to advise you to get back on topic, okay? Alright.
I've got a question for you. Now, when I first...
Okay, we can't, we can't ask a question, just state, you know.
Statement.
Yes, ma'am.
The value that they put on my ha- on my garage, this is my garage, this is not my house.
Okay.
This is not my land. This is my garage that's made out of carport material.
Uh-huh.
I care to, I carry the value that I paid for my house, my garage, nine, my garage is nine years old. And, um, when I realized they had put a fifty-one thousand dollar tax value on my garage by itself, I went to the tax office when I realized that this year to get it re-assessed on the garage. Well, um, Glenn came out to my house.
Mr. Eckert? Glenn Eckert?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Well, he, he didn't come until after I called the county manager to get a reassessment. He came out to my house, he took pictures. He took pictures of my garage and took them back. Then he came, then he called me on the phone and told me that they valued, they reduced the value from fifty-one thousand to forty-one thousand to twenty-five thousand. And I told him I was still not happy with that because my building, brand new, is twenty-two thousand dollars. I have copies, you have copies of a brand-new building right now as of today. The value of that metal carport is twenty-two thousand dollars, brand-new. My building is nine years old. My neighbor has the same building, same whittage, same wattage, maybe taller, but it's the same building. Their value is not as high as mine. And I live in an area that I live across the street from a trash dump. Now, it's a transfer station. I have buzzards, I have cotton everywhere from the cotton gin I live across the street from, trash everywhere, bags flying everywhere, bad smell everywhere in my area. Smell it twenty-four-seven, around sixty-five days a year. The value of my house, the value of my building, I don't feel like it's, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars if it's nine years old, and I can buy a brand-new one for twenty-two thousand. But they wanted to take the value off my house, they wanted to reduce the value of my house, not the value of my building. That's why I didn't sign that paper. They won't take the value off the building, but they want to take the value off my land and my house. And I don't think that's fair to me, as it property is valued and owned.
Okay, sorry about that, go ahead.
And I have to, you know, I have to deal with this every day. So that's why I came to y'all to see what it could be done about.
Okay. Ms. Stanfield, uh, very specifically, what are you asking of this, um, equalization of your board?
I'm asking for the board to reduce the value of my building, my garage, the carport of my garage.
Do you have an amount in mind?
I, if it's brand-new, I can buy it brand-new right now without the concrete for seventeen thousand dollars. If it's nine years old, it shouldn't be no twenty-five thousand dollars if it's nine years old of a metal carport building. I have a value of fifteen thousand dollars because I know you have to pay pri- property taxes, but they want to adjust one of my land and my house and not the building. They don't even want to talk about the building. They want the building to stay at, at twenty-five thousand dollars. And they want me to sign this paper that has the value of my property for twelve thousand dollars. But that is taking value from my house and my land, not the garage. And I know in four years, when they come back to do another assessment value, that, you know, your property taxes go up. And I know my garage is gonna go up even higher, and then my value of my land and my house is gonna go up even higher.
Okay. Alright, have you finished?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments from the E and R, um, board just before I have Mr. Lynch, if he want to ask any questions of her, any questions or comments to her? Okay, uh, Tony Rollins?
Mr. Chairman, I think we should ask Ms. Stanfield if she wants, whatever these documents are, does she want them entered into the evidence in this hearing?
Okay. Uh, Ms. Stanfield, would you like for the information that you handed out be entered into the evidence of this hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I have the original copy of what I paid for in the time of, when I went to the tax office for the denture, the value where I first paid for.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that. We'll land it into the record. Madam, let, let, let the record sort of like that. Okay.
I was told that it was not acceptable, the value of my receipt, what I paid for my building was not acceptable.
Alright, okay, uh, any other questions or comments? Uh, Mr. Silver?
I just want, on this, um, building here, have there been any upgrades to it? I believe they have electric utilities and anything of that nature?
No, sir.
Okay. Can you say something about concrete, or, yes?
The, the concrete, I have a receipt when I, when I first put the building there.
Mm-hmm.
I have a three thousand dollar receipt where I had to add concrete to the concrete that was already there because there was a building there before I put this building here. So I had to, um, make the, uh, you know, stint of the concrete. So it was like a three thousand dollar extra, but the total of the concrete in the building to sell is a total of eleven thousand dollars from nine years ago.
Hmm. Okay, you finished, Mr. Silver?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Uh, if not, Mr. Lynch, come up and kind of step into the front a little bit if you don't mind, 'cause you probably have to be in bu- are you having any questions of her?
Uh, no questions, sir.
Okay, alright. You can, um, Ms. Stanfield, if you don't mind, you can just have a seat right there. So you can be kind of close up, okay? Mr. Lynch, we'll hear from you at this time. And you've been sworn, and we'll hear from you.
Yes, sir, just a couple things I'd like to add before I talk anymore about the property. Uh, we don't know what the twenty-twenty re-evaluation is gonna bring. We don't know if it's gonna result in value going up, down, we don't know if it's gonna result in tax changes. So we can't focus anything today on that. Um, the reason we did not take into consideration Mrs. Stanfield's cost information that she provided during her initial appeal is because it was nine years old. The data we used to do the twenty-twenty-four reappraisal is from January first, twenty twenty, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So if we're having to use updated data when we request that same type of information on the taxpayer, I think anybody in the room knows, you can't buy anything today for what you could buy for two thousand sixteen. Um, so, and, uh, I think she stated that we don't want to talk about her garage, but we've been talking about her garage since January. We lowered it from four fifty-one to forty-five to twenty-five. That's a lot of power. And we haven't made adjustments. But we're to the bottom of our adjustment level for this type of garage based on our schedule of values that this board, not these members, but this board adopted in November of twenty twenty-three. So we take her information about her garage, the square foot, what type of construction quality it is, and then we take, we take into consideration what type of condition it is. And maxing out our schedule right now, we have it at twenty-five thousand dollars in value. Um, the information that she provided today, this is my first time seeing this information, so I haven't been able to use this information to make a decision. But on the, on page three, on the subtotal, it has the valuation at, uh, of the cost of the single garage at twenty-two thousand, um, eighty-one dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And our current value, uh, of the garage after, um, multiple adjustments is, uh, twenty-five thousand eight hundred. So that's roughly around, what, three thousand six hundred? Is it three, uh, three thousand and seven hundred and some change? Um, I think for rural slash urban counties like ours, that's a pretty good tolerance to value. We're never gonna be perfect. We're never gonna hit one on the head because we're massive crazy. Um, we tried to adjust the values. Now, we admitted when we were wrong. We had her garage way inflated when she first appealed. And the reason for that was, we had a higher grade on it than we should have per our new schedule of values. It was graded based on our old schedule of values. So as soon as we saw that error, we changed it. So we, we correct our mistake. But once we've done all we can do, we're kind of structured, and then the board has a decision to override it. So her cost of estimates twenty-two thousand eighty-one dollars, our value on the garage right now is twenty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, as far as, uh, us wanting to further lower her value based on, uh, her location, in reviewing this appeal in preparation for this hearing, I noticed that some of her neighbors are getting an economic adjustment on their homes due to their location. They live across from, I, I labeled it as a landfill in my agenda packet, but it's really the transfer station, if you're familiar with it, on three oh one.
Mm-hmm.
So I saw that her neighbors are getting an economic adjustment. So I feel even though we hadn't talked about that, she was deserving of that as well, which reduces it way lower than she would ever get on her garage. So I just, um, we, we trying to make our efforts, and we're here to, uh, know our feelings on our end. We just want to get this settled. So then my request, and unless Mrs. Stanfield has any questions, we may. My request is either that this board leave it at the previously adjusted value of one hundred and twelve thousand...
One hundred.
Correct, one hundred and twelve thousand one hundred, or further lower it to the ninety-seven thousand two hundred, that's with the twenty percent economic adjustment for the transfer station. Or this board has the authority to lower it even more based on the information she provided today. So if you guys want to lower it three thousand one dollars based on that garage, I'm at your request. You can put your vote.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna hear from Tony Rollins, and then I'm gonna hear from the E and R board members. And then I'll give you a chance to ask him any questions.
With the permission of the board, can I ask Mr. Lynch a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lynch, uh, did your office use an arbitrary method of appraisal in reaching the property value for Ms. Stanfield's property as of January one, two thousand twenty-four?
No, sir, we applied the schedule of values, um, that was downed by the board and complete to that.
Did you use an illegal method of appraisal in reaching this value?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, alright. Any questions from the E and R board members? Mr. Redd, did you have a question?
Not yet.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Lynch, so for our schedule of values, did the schedule of values include a building like, I mean, is this in a general garage category, or did we have something in schedule of values for a property that it's basically the metal carport that is sited in?
Yeah, we have, um, four to five little garage construction codes that we use. One is for the metal side of the garage, one on the metal side of it. Um, we take that classification, rate the square foot, and come up with what's called replacement opportunity to leave with that. And then we depreciate it based on its age and condition. So this is graded and labeled specifically for a metal garage. So we're not, we're not valuing it as if it was a masonry garage, or a frame garage, or anything, or an open-wall garage. We're evaluating it based on the building code for a metal garage. We have each line, and so in our outbuilding schedule, in our schedule of values, we have a line for each type of garage and a different base rate for square foot reach of those.
Okay, thank you.
You finished, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
Yes, if we go with the, I think, what, ninety-seven thousand two hundred, how much of that would be for the garage and how much would be for the home itself?
Alright, so that would, the ninety-seven two hundred would be the additional adjustment from the one twelve one hundred. So, um, the one thirty-eight hundred down to one twelve one hundred was just for the garage. Any additional adjustment is for location.
Okay.
You finished, Mr. Webb?
Yes, so that's combined, you would say?
That would be a combined, a gross adjustment for location and garage.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Just looking here and just going through a building, probably assuming this, my opinion, ninety-seven-two is a great price with everything it's been doing. And looking, I believe they got a, maybe a heater or some, some few upgrades too. It's really a good price. You can't buy one at this price, I believe. I think the tax assessor did a good job at what he's doing.
Okay, alright, anyone else? If not, uh, what is your pleasure? And I think you, you all know the options, Mr. Lynch has... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Lynch. Did you have any questions, Ms. Stanfield?
Yeah, I still have.
I'm sorry.
The, the paperwork that I gave you is a quote on a brand-new building of twenty-two thousand. And that is with, that's without concrete, okay?
Ms. Stanfield, the, the point is, do you have questions from Mr. Lynch? You already testified, but your questions are from Mr. Lynch. But then that's, that's what you've been asked to do.
To maybe still want to keep the value.
Okay, so what you've been asked to do is to ask any questions you have of Mr. Lynch, not to testify again.
Why does he still want to keep the value of ninety-seven thousand? And that is on, um, my house? And still have the value, still have the twenty-five thousand on the garage? It was below the value on my house for twenty, twenty percent. Giving me a twenty percent discount because I live across the street from a solid waste, a landfill.
Ms. Lynch, ask her that, please.
We're, we're offering that because your neighbors already get that benefit, so if you weren't...
This doesn't have...
No, I, I, oh, oh, no, be quiet, listen. And here we got this cell phone, and we need to turn it off.
Okay, so even if you weren't appealing your garage, if you had to peel your value in any way, and we looked at your neighboring properties, and we saw your neighbors were getting an adjustment that you qualify for, that you are not getting, we're gonna offer that adjustment. So if you don't want it, that's fine. That's a twenty percent adjustment on your house. We're not changing your garage anymore because we bottomed out the value on our schedule of values. We have it as a D-grade garage, which is on a scale from A, B, C, D, and E. So that's the next to the lowest grade for that type of building, and we have it in average condition, which we assume it is. We didn't see any major defects to change anywhere below that. So that's why we leave it at that, unless this board takes this.
Okay, there's a picture on the inside of my garage. That you're, um...
Is this in the packet of information, Ms. Stanfield?
It's in his packet.
Okay, alright, okay.
There's a picture.
Is it a damage or something like that?
Yes, it's on the inside of the garage.
But is it substantial damage? Because average taking, average condition takes into consideration regular damage of maintenance.
Yes, ma'am. What is your question in regards to that? What is your question to him in regards to that?
Question to him, he sees this damage on the inside of my garage. But he's still valuing my garage at twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, my, my staff appraiser looked at everything that you wanted to show him. He took that picture while he was on site. I value his opinion. If his opinion is that your garage condition should be averaged, then that's what I'm gonna put there.
Do you have any further questions, Ms. Stanfield? Questions, ma'am, or something you want to ask him?
The question is, the value still come out of my house of the twenty...
If you, if you don't want the twenty percent economic adjustment, we'll stay at the value of one twelve one hundred, or they can lower that value for your garage. And then you don't have to get the twenty percent value adjustment for your location.
My brother had the value adjusted off of my garage.
I have no control over that. The board's the only person, the only entity that can make a change at this point. So you can direct that to them. I, I can't change it right now, number one.
Okay, sounds like to me, uh, Ms. Stanfield, you don't really have any questions of him anymore. And, uh, you can have a seat back there, thank you. Okay, Mr. Lynch, you can have a seat as well. Alright, uh, we're the E and R, you know, we've heard the information coming from the taxpayers as well as our tax assessor. Uh, any questions or comments? Mr. Barrett?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, by making the news board, somebody can give you some guidance here. Do we... I'm so inclined, now that I'm looking at her numbers for her, but it's costing her to put her, the new garage out there, to believe that maybe that garage number is a little higher than maybe what market value should be. However, I think the overall ninety-seven-two is well within what the appraised value of our house, you know, taxable value of our house should be. So can we, can we do that? Can we say the overall value should be ninety-seven-two, and the garage value should be twenty?
Tony Rollins? Here's what you're doing. And I alluded to this with my questions to Mr. Lynch. What's, what's at issue here overall? And what you need to recall as a board of E and R is to determine whether or not the county assessor used an arbitrary method to come to a value, or did he use an illegal method to come to the value? And if he did that, you still have to decide whether the value he reached is way above what the actual market value of the property is. Now, the evidence is, he did not use an arbitrary or illegal value. He used the schedule of values adopted by this board. As he testified, he took the data from the field, and he applied, uh, taking that data, they assessed a grade to the, uh, the materials that were used to build the garage, in this case, a grade A. And they took the condition of the garage, on average condition, and using that, you get the result you get from our schedule of values. Now, beyond that, uh, he has proposed that the, because of the property being located near the transfer station on highway three oh one, other neighbors are getting some discount for that. Uh, Ms. Stanfield was not, and he's, he's proposed to you that that discount be provided. This is not a situation where you go piece by piece on the doghouse, the garage, the tool shed, what's it worth, what's the outhouse worth, that kind of thing. It's all about what the overall value of the property is.
I answered my question.
Okay, and I think, uh, Mr. Silver was on point with his comments earlier anyway, in my opinion. But anyway, uh, anything else from any of the board of E and R? If not, I need you, I need a motion in regards to what your pleasure is. Make sure you turn your, uh, mics on when you speak, too.
Um, I'll make a motion that ninety-seven-two, I think he did a great job taking things into consideration. He's got the numbers. I think maybe probably desired outcome was just not in the methods she agreed. Saying that, I think ninety-seven-two, using his, the value, the scale system that we use is a fair price, fair tax assessment.
Okay, you've heard the motion coming from Mr. Silver's there, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Webb in the follow-up discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sign. Um, Ms. Stanfield, I think you know what that means, but if you need to talk with our tax assessor or his staff, he'd be glad to explain it to you. Okay. At this time, um, we're going to ask for an adjournment pursuant to North Carolina Jones statute, um, section one oh five, three two two, um, open, closed parentheses, F. Can I get a motion to that effect? Motion made by Mr. Barrett's there, second, submitted, uh, second by Mr. Silver in the follow-up discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay? While the E and R is adjourned, yes, sir, Mr. Lynch.
I just want to point out, even with the adjournment, we do have recurring appeals.
Yes, sir.
So by your adjournment, that allows for no more appeals for the twenty-fourth of tax year.
Right.
We can't accept any new appeals, but we're still working our existing appeals. So I may need this board of E and R to re-prove just to do more consent decisions and possibly some other taxpayer appeals, but right now we've got three things.
Okay.
Alright, okay.
Thank you, sir. Alright, at this time... All right, at this time, we're going to turn our attention toward the Halifax County Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, again, I want to remind everyone of the very lengthy agenda of this county commissioners meeting as well. Don't want anyone to feel like they're rushing anything in the presentation and all, but we just need to be mindful of that. Let me officially come to order at this time, thank all of you all for being here. Um, we're going to have the invocation that's gonna be led by Vice Chair, uh, Shemara Richardson-Davis. Those of you who wish to stand and join in with us, please do at this time, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance in the unison.
To God, we come to you today with thankful hearts. We are thankful that you allowed us to journey here today for this meeting and allowing us to gather to take care of the business that concerns Halifax County and its citizens. We ask that your presence be in this meeting today and offer guidance to us as we make decisions to make sure that Halifax County is the best that it can be. In all these things, we ask in your name, amen.
Amen.
Our prayers are rooted in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can tell we are a little bit, we might have closed today, aren't we? Okay, at this time, we're going to turn our attention to the adoption of the agenda. I trust that my colleagues have had a chance to review the agenda. I will so entertain the motion for the adoption, if that's your pleasure.
Subliming.
Motion made by Commissioner Webb's there second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Redden, in the further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Next item is the conflict of interest. In accordance with the Halifax County Board of Commissioners rules or procedure, in the North Carolina General Statute, section one five three, A dash forty-four, it is a duty of every member present to govern all matters coming before the board unless there is a conflict of interest as determined by the board by law. Does any board member have a non-conflict interest? We respect the matters coming before the board today, Commissioner Silver.
No, sir.
No conflict?
No conflict.
No conflict?
No conflict, no conflict.
Madam Clerk, let the director reflect that the six commissioners present do not have conflict with any matters coming before us today.
Yes, sir.
Next item, consent agenda. Item A is the approval of amendments, and you have that in your packet of information. Item B, budget amendments. Item C, property tax collection refunds and releases, April twenty twenty-five. Um, in regards to the consent agenda, what is your pleasure?
Motion for approval.
Okay, motion made by, uh, Vice Chair Davis there second? Second by Commissioner Byrd, in further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, now we get into one of the most important parts of this meeting, in my opinion, and that's special recognitions. Just before I do special recognitions, uh, I do want to recognize our resident Superior Court Judge, Senior Resident Superior Court Judge, Judge Branch, thank you for being here, our Sheriff, uh, Tyree Davis, and I saw Miss Phoebe Faceon back there, who is, where are you? Okay, she is the male pro-temin in Littleton. Um, have our Superintendent of Halifax County Schools, Eric Cunningham, thank you for being here. Got my doctor back there in the back, I gotta recognize my doctor, he's been my doctor for over thirty years, eyes and mouth. And, um, let's see, any more elected officials? Oh, Dr. Elliott, Halifax Community College. And, um, any appointed elect, which I see our Director of, um, of the Board of Elections is here, and, uh, thank you for being here. Okay, um, and my pastor over there too, T.J. Walker, raise your hand. Okay, all right, um, anyone else? Oh, Kim Matt, with Representative Don Davis is always, raise your hand, Kim. Thank you for being here too. She's always everywhere. Sheriff, who'd I overlook? Mr. Who? That's right, my good friend and partner is Noah Davis, he's the Vice Chair of the Rollins City School Board, thank you for being here, Mr. Davis. Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you for that, Sheriff. All right, and at this time, we're going to special recognitions, um, resolution honoring the services rendered by Dr. Barbara Haste, Barbara Bradley Haste, the Halifax Community College. I know her son, who is always calling him Coach, he's with her as well, but we're going to ask, uh, Commissioner Thomas Byrd to come forth and do that.
Dr. Haste, if you'll come on up, your family can come on up with you. Dr. Elliott, if you'll come on up.
Thank you, Sheriff. You can, you can see that the sheriff does more to protect than serve.
Before I read this, I would, me and Dr. Davis have been meeting each other once a month for about six years now, uh, while I've been on the board of the community college. But we all know here in Halifax County, people get opportunities, especially people who excel at their jobs, get opportunities to go to many different places, do many different things, and probably get paid far more money. But a few individuals decided to stay here and stick it out here, and to educate children here, and to continue to, you know, contribute to what we have here in Halifax County. Dr. Haste is one of those people, and I just want to take him on behalf of me, and I'm sure a lot of people here in Halifax County, we just appreciate the years of service he's given to this people. So, whereas Dr. Barbara Bradley Haste has been with senior level leadership at Halifax Community College since two thousand and five, including roles as Dean, Vice President of Student Services and Enrollment Management, and Vice President of Academic and Student Affairs. This enduring leadership reflects a deep commitment to institutional advancement, student success, and community engagement over two decades. And whereas Dr. Barbara Bradley Haste has served as a nationally recognized accreditation leader, and was selected repeatedly to serve on a reaffirmation committee, which contributed to institutional quality assurance in colleges and schools southeast of the United States. And whereas Dr. Barbara Bradley Haste has maintained a exemplary institutional compliance record, and oversaw politics and regulatory initiatives with ten consistent success, achieving clean knowledge for over two decades, and reinforcing a strong culture of accountability and excellence. And whereas Dr. Barbara Bradley Haste has empowered underrepresented student voice and advocated for world-based platforms that elevate students' perspectives, we conclude the Halifax Community College First Podcast and Mentoring Program designed for both inclusivity and belong. And whereas Dr. Barbara Bradley Haste has added innovative administrative expansion and led the development of the new CTE program aligning the regional workforce need to ensure relevancy and sustainability in Halifax Community College curriculum also. Now therefore, be it resolved as the Halifax County Board Commission, and hereby a thank and express sincere appreciation to Dr. Barbara Bradley Haste for her selfless and outstanding service to Halifax County and its citizens. Be it further resolved if the original of this resolution is presented to Dr. Barbara Bradley Haste, and will copy this resolution, be spread from the minutes of Halifax County Board Commission this fifth day of May, twenty twenty-five.
Well, squeeze together, because I know you're on the list. That's beautiful.
Now, um, Mr. Byrd, okay. Mr. Byrd, that's, you can make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to be adopted.
All right, motion, motion made by Commissioner Byrd's there, I know Commissioner Redden want to second it, since she works at the community college. All right, motion made by Commissioner Byrd, second by Commissioner Redden, uh, in the further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Um, Ms. Haste, we will hear from you at this time, and, um, and we can even hear from, why don't we hear from your boss, and then we'll hear from you? Okay, Dr. Elliott?
Thank you, thank you, um, to the board. Uh, good morning, everyone. On behalf of the faculty of the board of presidents, Dr. Bradley Haste, the Halifax Community College President, I am honored with one of the biggest plates ever been put today to honor the leadership and all of the work that Dr. Haste has poured into, um, our students. And I'm just privileged as a president to be there and have worked with her, to see them walk out the door when I walk in, and say, we continue to support and support, and I'm grateful for your leadership and all the work that you have provided to our institution. We honor you as well.
Dr. Haste, it's your turn.
I want to thank Dr. Elliott for giving the opportunity to work alongside her. It has been an honor. I've been working for the state of South Carolina for thirty-six, seven, four, five years. And this time, I have to be the brightest light that will show up in the next part of my life. I want to thank my daughter, ladies, and Haste for being here, my sons, John Paul Haste, my wife, and my friends, and my life, my mother, and my daughter, my brothers, and sisters, for me.
Dr. Haste, I can tell you about all those boards that we have in Halifax County, you can serve on if you like, but we got about forty, fifty. Dr. Haste, I can talk about you all day, you know that, and, uh, you have been wonderful this commander, Commissioner Byrd, some, I can't say anything more, you know, you did have an opportunity, still have an opportunity to lead a community, but you have chosen to stay here, and thank you for doing that, God bless you.
Thank you.
Keep it right along with our special, yes, sir, Sheriff, you can push that back. Thank you. County manager just reminded me, other D's as a sign. Other duties, Rob, I'm sorry. Okay, next item, um, twenty twenty-five Governor's Volunteer Awards. Keep it right along with the special recognition we'll hear from our Deputy County Manager, and this is real, real special too, of the twenty twenty-five Governor's Volunteer Awards. We have you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have had the pleasure of serving as the award coordinator for the Governor's Volunteer Award since I started with the county. Um, and I have thoroughly enjoyed it, and I enjoy bringing that to you every year. Um, and this year is no different, extremely special, extremely deserving award winner. So as you'll see in your agenda packet, the Governor's Volunteer Service and Work Program was created by the Office of the Governor in nineteen seventy-nine, and recognizes North Carolina's most dedicated volunteers. As we know, our county would not function without them. Through the years, the award has been bestowed on thousands of North Carolinians who have shown concern and compassion for their neighbors by volunteering in their local communities. Each county selects, solicits nominations from the public, and may select up to ten individuals, businesses, groups, teams, and one-page director of volunteers to be recognized for their outstanding contributions to their communities. One of the nominees is chosen by the county to be considered for the Governor's Medallion Award for Volunteer Service, which is awarded to the top twenty volunteers in the state. That's pretty prestigious. Halifax County is pleased this year to have three Governor's Volunteer Service Award winners, and one who has been chosen by the state as a Governor's Medallion Award winner. So, without further ado, now I will say this, um, to make things as expeditions as possible, I will read off the nominations, and then we'll have all four winners come up at one time for a review. All right, here we go. This award winner is well-known throughout Halifax County and the state of North Carolina, a true leader. He was the first African-American president of Halifax Community College. During his presidency, he started PRIDE, a male mentoring program to encourage intellectual, academic, and educational success. Helping our communities chart the course, he serves as a member of the Southern Christian Leadership Association, an active civil rights organization. A trustee at First Baptist Church in Weldon, North Carolina, this volunteer exercises his faith to give back and inspire people at this, this church and in the community. He has a strong belief in civil engagement, as such, he chose to serve on the Halifax County Board of Elections. A post he has held for seven years, contributing at least seventy hours or more annually to ensure accurate, equitable county elections. An additional community service, this award winner is a very active member of the Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity, that has a focus... That has a focus on responding to issues affecting the African-American community, whether engagement, mentoring, education, healthcare, and... He is also a longstanding member of the local Rotary Club, and lives by the Rotary mission of providing services to others, promoting integrity, and advancing goodwill, understanding, and peace. Paying homage to leaders from the past is important to this volunteer. In fact, he was a key part of the committee to create the Syracuse Evans Public Art Project in Renegrafa, to honor civil rights leader Syracuse Evans. The Syracuse Evans Public Art Project Committee was not only a twenty twenty-two Governor's Volunteer Service Award winner, but also one of the few statewide to be recognized as a medallion winner. This award winner, as you all know, Dr. Urban Griffin. Dr. Urban Griffin has stood on the shoulders of others to accomplish great things, and he encourages and affords new generations the opportunity to stand on his shoulders to achieve even greater heights. With grateful hearts for his many contributions to Halifax County, we are proud to present Dr. Griffin with the twenty twenty-five Governor's Volunteer Service Award. Okay. That's just one, y'all. All right, next one, I'm just going in alphabetical order by last names, except for our medallion, that's gonna be last. All right. Our next award winner gives her heart and soul to the animals of Halifax County through her service with Rainbow Rescue. Animal rescue operations are truly a full-time job. Animal rescue is more than full-time, actually, because animals need here twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Rescues can happen in the middle of the night, on the weekend, when travel is planned, and on holidays. No matter when or where she must go, this volunteer is there for these animals. She sometimes must have the experience of seeing these sweet creatures living in deplorable conditions. She may hear truly sad stories of people who no longer have the capacity to care for their pets due to death, illness, or age. She may witness wounds, sickness, malnourishment, abuse, or death of animals. No matter how much all this sadness and heartbreak impacts her, this volunteer continues, focusing on the joy of saving every animal she can, giving each one love and bringing them back to health. She supplies the loving care that is so desperately needed, giving not only her time, but also her personal finances. The truths of this investment come when these animals are given to loving, loving families and find their forever homes. German philosopher Immanuel Kant said, "He who is cruel to animals becomes hard also in his dealings with men. We can judge the heart of a man by his treatment of animals." Clearly, the heart of this award winner, Jackie Stanley, contains kindness and compassion for Halifax County's animal citizens. Because of her devotion to all God's creatures, and her desire to give animals loving homes, Halifax County is happy to present her with the twenty twenty-five Governor's Volunteer Service Award. For over two decades, one of our award winners has been a dedicated and invaluable volunteer at the Halifax County Library, leaving a lasting imprint on its programs, spaces, and community. Since two thousand, her passion, creativity, and generosity have shaped the library into a more vibrant and engaging place for patrons of all ages. Her involvement in Halifax County Library's programs has been nothing short of extraordinary. Her creativity has played a central role in Halifax County Library's events, particularly Halloween, where she has... particularly Halloween, where she has transformed spaces, run activity stations, and documented programs through photography. Since 2018, she has collaborated closely with the branch manager to develop engaging content for seasonal programs, including Christmas and summer reading. Beyond her planning, her willingness to assist with any decorating or organizing task reflects her deep commitment to maintaining a welcoming and festive atmosphere for all. She has physically shaped the library by painting the children's room and continuously donated supplies such as coloring books, activity books, and folding tables. As the current treasurer of the Friends of the Library, she actively supports library initiatives and assists staff wherever needed. When entering homes, helping at the circulation desk, or participating in staff events, she is always ready to lend a hand. Her impact is felt daily, not only through the programs she helps create, but also through the warm and inviting environment she fosters. Patrons often assume she is a staff member, and she graciously assists them or directs them to the appropriate person. Her kindness, attentiveness, and ability to connect with both staff and visitors make her a cherished presence at the library. This award winner, Donna Valtis, embodies the true spirit of volunteerism, and her legacy at the Halifax County Library will be felt for years to come. It is with great appreciation and admiration that Halifax County presents her with the 2025 Governor's Volunteer Service Award. And finally, many of these words I'm not gonna take credit for because I had assistance from a commissioner perhaps, and I will not give credit to our chairman for having the thought to nominate this person for the Governor's Volunteer Award and put him down in the board. This one's not gonna be easy to keep a secret, even though I'm gonna try. Our next award winner is an agent of Hillary and is recognized as a distinguished activist, community leader, and former educator, whose life's work has been dedicated to social justice, agricultural sustainability, rural community empowerment, and volunteerism. Born into a family with deep roots in North Carolina's farming heritage, this volunteer grew up completely aware of the challenges faced by small-scale communities, farmers, and African-American landowners in the South. In the classroom, he inspired his students by emphasizing the importance of reading comprehension, integrating performing arts into lessons, and using activism to instill the value of civic engagement. Recognizing that nurturing students required work beyond the classroom, this dedicated educator often went above and beyond to volunteer his time to ensure his graduates could succeed. After deciding to leave the teaching profession, this community leader began leading the concerned citizens of Hillary, where he test champions civil rights, environmental justice, and land preservation. Recognizing the challenges of food insecurity in rural areas, he has partnered with local farmers and organizations to distribute fresh produce and other foods to families in need. He has organized community forums on job training and career development to empower residents to secure better opportunities. He has facilitated access to educational resources by collecting and distributing school supplies and books to underprivileged students to ensure they have the tools to succeed. His volunteer work also includes providing free workshops on estate planning to empower families to manage their resources effectively and retain generational land. He has played a vital role in connecting community members with essential services, such as helping residents navigate bureaucratic systems, access state and federal resources, and find vocational training opportunities. These efforts exemplify his dedication to addressing both immediate needs and systemic challenges facing rural communities. Throughout his career, this community champion has received numerous accolades, recognizing his unwavering commitment to his community and his advocacy work. In fact, the North Carolina Environmental Justice Network, which he helped to establish, honored him in 2024 by naming the Nan Freeland and Gary Grant Seeds of Change Award after him. This prestigious award recognizes not only Gary's transformative impact on environmental justice and grassroots activism, but also his tireless volunteerism. His dedication to serving others and empowering communities has left a lasting legacy of hope and resilience. A charismatic and dynamic speaker, a tireless advocate, and a selfless volunteer, Gary Grant exemplifies the power of community-driven change and stands as a beacon of hope for underserved communities across the country. His dedication to service and his belief in the strength of collective action continue to inspire those around him. Through his work, he has instilled the importance of volunteerism in younger family members, former students, young people, interns, employees, and countless others. For these reasons and many others, Halifax County is proud to recognize Gary Grant as not only a 2025 Governor's Volunteer Service Award winner, but also one of the prestigious medallion award winners recommended by the county and selected by the state of North Carolina. So now that everyone's on their feet, I can have our four winners come up front so I can present some thank you. Sheriff, you are a wonderful asset. Wilford, would you take a photo for us? And anybody else that you would like to have?
Ms. Wil, I'm gonna embarrass you. You need to take a photo with the four of them. You do. And then we're gonna take some other photos, like with commissioners. We'll probably be at ease for a few minutes, a little bit. But let's just do this first. The medallion winners come up, and all those award winners come up, and take a picture with Ms. Wil. Ms. Scott, do you mind doing that? Mr. Griffin, Mr. Grant, all of y'all come on up. Yeah, right here. Just turn around right there, yeah.
Dr. Griffin. This should be Mr. Jackie. Yep, Mr. Jackie.
And, okay, yeah, take a picture.
And Mr. Green.
Yes, ma'am.
I will say that, thank you. Oh, there's my face, okay. Mr. Grant will be receiving a special award from the state of North Carolina at a medallion ceremony, at least from today. So I don't have his pin or his North Carolina certificate, but I do have a certificate made from the county, a county pin, and then because to us, leadership and community leaders, I kind of view them as like the staff, supporting the staff, leading people. So we're presenting him with a walking stick from the county. And let me give each of you, there's a county volunteer pin. Here's your state volunteer pin. County, state, county, state, here's your certificate. Okay. They're holding that for you, and they're holding that hostage. You're gonna be the end of the medallion. Everybody get in place. Wow, say cheese. There you go, one more time, and I'm gonna get out everybody's way.
All right, now hold tight. I'm gonna stand with the commissioners to stand behind them. Y'all stand where y'all, don't move. We're gonna stand behind y'all.
We gotta look pretty.
I gotta stand behind Mr. Grant.
I'll stand behind Dr. Griffin.
That's right.
All right, are we okay, y'all?
I can barely see the back. Y'all didn't know y'all were so famous, you weren't a parochiality, I tell you what.
We all good? All right, thank y'all. Now, at this time, I know we're focused, God will lead, whatever, two brackets will stay. We're gonna take about 10 minutes, and then we'll come back, okay? 10 minutes. So feel free to take a question.
Thank you, Chris. Sir. That's right. Okay, this time we move into item C on the agenda. I'm not sure who's handling that. Jessica McMillan is listed, but also, okay, Mr. Steven Green is here with us. Okay, 2025 Proclamation Recognizing Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Mr. Green, we're here for you. Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Is it all? Okay.
This opportunity. I'm standing in for Jessica McMillan. And in the year of today, we've probably come to forty-four requests for 2025 Proclamation Recognizing Asian American and Pacific Islander Month. I would like to recognize two members of our commission, and I would ask that they stand before Mr. K. Thomas Evans, and our liaison, Lieutenant County, Thomas L. Emmett. Ever, Thomas Everett, I believe, that's a representative.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Come up. Along with General Bill, she's a member of the committee member. And Mr. Betty Booth, who we know as a candidate. For your consideration, the Halifax County Human Relations Commission trusted, in honor of monthly have honored different organizations and people monthly. This month is Asian American and Pacific Islander Month, whereas May is nationally recognized as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And it is a time to recognize and celebrate contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to the American story. And whereas Halifax County recognizes the innumerable contributions, the culture, the heritage of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. And whereas the 2025 National theme for the observance of Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a legacy of leadership and resilience, honoring the contributions of past leaders while encouraging future generations to thrive and adapt. Whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made significant contributions to every aspect of our society, which is reason to celebrate the indelible marks these individuals have left on our culture and pay tribute to the myriad ways in which they strengthened our country and county. Whereas Halifax County is proud to honor the history, contributions, and achievements of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in our communities and remains committed to strengthening our ongoing relationships with Asian and Pacific Islander partners. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Halifax County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes and celebrates Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, encouraging residents to learn more about the histories and reflect upon and appreciate the significant contributions that have been made by these members of our community. We commend Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders of Halifax County for how they have transformed adversity and to opportunities and have made invaluable contributions in our communities and encourage everyone to continue to advocate for justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion for all in their pursuit of equality, opportunity, and success. And with that, we would like to present that motion of consideration.
Okay, you've heard from Mr. Green regarding the adoption of the 2025 Proclamation Recognizing Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. What is your pleasure?
I move for the...
Okay, all right, motion made by Commissioner Barris, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Davis. In further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Committee and our liaison and Mr. Green, thank you all so much for all that you do. And Mr. Green, you do quite a bit for our community and it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you so much.
We appreciate that. And for the record, if I may, I would like to recognize, I was not able to get it into proclamation, but a good friend of mine who was the 2024, one of the heroes of Valor Awards last year for the 250th, is my friend, Dr. Leveer Ray Bender Mamee. If that could be in three minutes, that would be greatly appreciated if I had to stand there.
Right, thank you so much for that. All right, next item on the agenda is the proclamation in honor of 2025 Emergency Medical Services Week. Emergency medical services, I can't just tell you how much important they are. Warner Ferguson, Assistant Director of Emergency Services is with us. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Senator. And here to put your consideration on proclamation of each of us, which is May 8th, June 24th, 2025. Whereas emergency medical services are vital public service, especially rural counties. Whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care, both in need twenty-two hours a day, seven days a week, taking away from their own family on weekends and holidays. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves novel recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And Halifax County supports six EMS stations spread geographically throughout the county to provide rapid response time and access to life-saving care. And whereas emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing support for out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to level telemedicine. And whereas emergency medical services system assists first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical doctors, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams will, career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize value in the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers, especially Halifax County's sixty-eight full-time and additional part-time EMS members by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, it be proclaimed by Halifax County Board Commissioners in recognition of the significance of emergency medical services. Week of May 8th through May 24th, 2025 is designated Emergency Medical Services Week. Week care for everyone is the theme of the fifty-first anniversary of EMS Week, and that the care for all the people demonstrates daily that Halifax County emergency EMS profession. The Board of Commissioners encourages the community to observe EMS Week with appropriate programs to serve only and activities around EMS profession and essential services these facilities provide. Doctor, this is the day of May 2025.
Okay, thank you for that. What is your pleasure, colleagues?
I vote for the proclamation.
Thank you. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Barrett. Who's second at?
Second.
All right, second by Commissioner Silver. In further discussion, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. You know, I know your boss man is not here today, but you are, so you're next in charge. And you all know, on behalf of the Commissions, thank you so much for all that you all do. You know, some people just take it for granted at what you all do, and I don't. And because I know my family and neighbors have utilized your services, and you all do a great job. And on behalf of the Board of County Commissions, thank you all so much for all that you do. And also introduce the young man that's with you.
Mr. Brown.
Okay, thank you for being here, Mr. Brown. Okay, no problem. But look, do relate to the director that we do appreciate all that you all do. At your staff meeting, just let them know that. This is from the entire board. We really mean that from bottom of our hearts. And thank you so much, okay? All right. All right, next on the agenda is item three, Public Committee Period. Do not have anyone that signed up to speak, so we're going to move to item four on the agenda, which is the, I think Ms. Scott, we're going to have Public Hand Regarding to Appropriation Expanded to a Grant Fund for Site Due Diligence for U.S. 301 Industrial Site. And after she finishes her presentation, that's when I'll read the statement and open it up. Ms. Scott?
Good morning.
Morning.
In 2023, the site, select site readiness program was established by the general statute of development strategically positioned sites under a thousand acres with a goal to enhance the state's competitiveness for significant manufacturing investments. We applied in 2024, and in 2024, the county-owned U.S. Highway 301 industrial site was chosen as one of fifteen select sites statewide. And so with the funding allocated to the economic development partnership of the Grand Calana, we applied in December for a grant of $78,500 to do some additional site due diligence at that industrial site, specifically an updated Phase One environmental assessment, an ALTA survey, we have the boundary survey, but wanted to upgrade that to an ALTA survey, get some additional site boring to update the geotechnical report, do preliminary engineering for the access code of the site, and then conduct a countywide labor study, which is really important in all that stuff. So because this is an appropriation on behalf of economic development, you as the Board of Commissioners will require the under public hearing concerning the appropriation of these funds for economic development purposes under general statute of PTA Act, second amendment C. So that is the intro for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Scott. All right, at this time, our Commissioners, I'm going to read an opening statement regarding the public hand, and then I would ask for a motion after that to officially open it. Okay? All right, opening statement for public hand. Public hands are held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding a specific subject. Those persons designed to speak will give their name, their physical address, and their phone number, and the name of the organization they're speaking for, if applicable. We request that each speaker limit their comments solely to the issue at hand and not direct comments towards specific individuals. In interest of time, please do not repeat facts or issues covered by previous speakers. If you wish to comment, you should express your opinion on the subject matter and give the Board an understanding of whether you favor or oppose the issue being discussed. The Halifax County Board of Commissioners values and appreciates the opportunity to listen to the citizens of Halifax County, and respect requested above guidelines be followed. Based on that, Commissioners, you heard from Ms. Scott about this public hand, which is about appropriations expanded to a grant funds for site due diligence for U.S. 301 industrial site. What is your pleasure?
I move for the token for public comment.
All right, motion made by Vice Chair Davis, there's a second. Second by Commissioner Redden. In further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so you all have heard me, so just come up and just follow my instructions. Yes, ma'am.
See that no one has come up for the comment. I move it before the closing.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Davis, Vice Chair Davis, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Barrett. In further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, next item is the Halifax County State of Recreation Update. Mr. Chester Williams, who is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, I believe he's the chair, we'll hear from you at this time, and you can introduce anyone that's with you if you like.
All right, good morning. Thank you.
Good morning.
The management and resident of Halifax County. Chester Williams, and it's an honor and privilege to stand before you to do the state of recreation. I am joined today by other community members, members of the board, and I was the board. I'm in handy, I have each his name. All right, I typically like to come to the board once a year to get an annual update of the Parks and Rec...
Mr. Williams, are you okay standing like that? If not, you could sit with the mic. Okay, okay, go ahead.
To give an annual update of what's happened with the state of recreation of Halifax County.
All right, so the state of recreation, today we're just going to do briefly the current landscape accomplishments, outlook, future, and next steps. And we're going to skip through some slides because some of them are repetitive from previous years.
And we're going to skip through some slides because some of them are repetitive from previous years. But we're going to look at the timeline. So in 2012, we had the Halifax Recreation Network that developed a comprehensive master plan, which is one of the most respectful master plans that really dives into the needs of Halifax County and how we look forward with recreation business forward. In 2014, the Parks and Recreation Board was established. And in 2018, the Foyt Rule Life Center receives updates that were very promising as a regional park for Halifax County. In 2020, a scratch plan was installed and opened a channel of recreation center in Grand Rapids. And then in 2021, we have offer funded and we have community input session, where recreation was named as one of the community priorities for the funding that we use. In 2023, it was placed up in master plan, because in 2024, it will become a fire in the center. In 2024, we have Recreation Focus Group that initiated the survey, and the goal is to get 100 surveys completed for residents of Halifax County. And in 2026, it's the Halifax Resort Anniversary, and we're discussing using that as a recreational kickoff around recreational tourism for Halifax County. And I would like to insert there in 2025, that's not there, that just recently happened because of you all. Thanks to the Halifax County County Commissioners for taking this step. We now we voted to implement a plan for a countywide Parks and Recreation Department for Halifax County, which was one of the most important pieces that came out of recommendations from the master plan. So thank you all for taking those steps. So we all know what Recreation Equity is, and it's sure that everyone has access to recreation across the county in every space that's possible. And when we talk about countywide recreation, we look at it in different aspects, such as advocacy for the building, asset inventory, and then of course, we are now implementing a countywide Parks and Recreation Department. Now, we want to celebrate, because we have to celebrate the wins that's been over the last 10, 11 years. An exclusive playground is stopping that. It's exclusive because it's available to everyone, and every time I go past it, there are some young people and families out there utilizing our park. The Foyt Rule Life Center has truly become a beacon for our community that draw people. I see people that basketball there, walk the trail, of course, the Esq. question, uh, course facility there. And of course, Meetup Mountain State Park, we're starting to see a increase of local people utilizing the state park. How fortunate we are to have a state park in Halifax County, and also a park that has a playground, which is not known, and which is not always noticeable or possible at state parks, and we are very fortunate to be one of the first to have a playground at Meetup Mountain State Park. Also civic groups, faith-based ministry, and wellness ministry are popping up in our churches and our community groups. And also thanks to you for the recreation grants that you provide through the Recreation Partners have sparked a lot of recreational opportunities in our counties, and especially in areas that are lacking recreational opportunities. And then also the County Recreation Agent that was recently hired through the corporate extension is a bold move forward as in terms of being able to address some of the inequities around recreation, but not all. And then the call of action is that we do recommend that the Recreation Foundation formation, making Recreation Equity a priority, and I mentioned earlier about tourism, making sure that we keep that aspect of recreation is a big boost for tourism, which will also impact education, economic development, and all things for our county. Our 10 Recreation State Convene meeting, so that we have all voices and the themes elevated there, developed a budget for a County Recreation Department. Of course, update the master plan, because it's a living reason document for our county. And I will tell you, it's well respected by other counties that do not have a master plan that's looking to develop one as well. They use ours as a model. And share complete recreational needs survey, so we need to be completely so that we can have all voices across our collective uplifting act to guide the development of the departments. And then recreation as an economic driver, tourism, I want to put a highlight there because with entering the 250th anniversary, we can really, I don't want to say capitalize, but really utilize this as a motion to kickoff recreation for this area. All right, so the county did the survey, there's the link there, we'll make sure they share that more. Go to the county website or corporate extension to receive that. All right, so in this, so we are percolated minister of recreation. Recreation as in terms of program is absolutely in Halifax County. We have programs that's everywhere, that's available, and there's need for more. And this is me just skipping through. And for the municipalities, we need them to administer and coordinate on the county or the municipality level. And then also the county government to coordinate, not administer recreation, because that is already taking place in what I think of. We need someone at a versatile view to help coordinate, organize, and see where the gaps are, how to fill those gaps, and then looking at the operational and administrative goals of recreation. Connecting with the Recreation Foundation, maintaining the inventory. How a Parks and Recreation Board that has authority to do policy creations, because we don't have policies. And we need those policies in place to formalize and to make sure recreation is a strong foundational piece that meets the goals of all areas of Halifax County, whether that's recreation, that's education, because recreation has a strong piece and value and meaningful for each of those areas. Also county staff and to be able to support the department to make sure it's run efficiently and effectively. And their capacity to be able to train us around recreation. Because I want to say here, recreation is more than just parks. It's more than just going outside and play. There's different aspects to recreation that's important, and we need to make sure. And one thing that I would say in the Parks and Recreation Board here, we have to redefine recreation for what it is for Halifax County, because it's not going to look like it is in West County, Lecleneburg, or even in Northampton. We have to define it for us and move that forward. And then leverage its funding for recreation moving forward. So I would say come together at the beginning, keep it together as progress, and working together is success. And that's a quote I think before. So my recommendation on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Board is to continue to build recreation champions throughout the county, and you see we have some in the room today. And then also the countywide recreation department, which will have made the plan to move forward, joining the Recreation Foundation, getting it in form, utilizing offer funded for recreation. And make them look different, and look creatively, and look innovative. They could be in housing, they could be in job creation, et cetera. Recreation tourism, and also Parks and Recreation Board with authority, or Parks and Recreation Authority to do policy development that is much needed as we develop the department. Well, really, if you all could stand, and then also what I'd like you all to ask for the hard work that you all have put in, to be able to provide these recommendations, each of you, to the Commissioners. So we have Mr. Nelson Fields, our bill of affairs. And it's saying, Ms. Mildred Moore, and yours truly, Chester Williams. I want to thank you all again. Any questions?
Okay, we've heard information coming from Mr. Williams, who is the chair of the Halifax County Park and Recreation Advisory Board. Any questions or comments? Vice Chair Davis?
Thank you for your work that you're doing for our community and county, Chester, in recreation. Just how many surveys have been had, completed, and submitted?
I think we are about 100 and plus, and it's still ongoing. Corporate extension is now having a survey, and we still have to get more out. So there is need for more input, so your offices, I mean paper copies, let us know, we can get it to you. We want to make sure that we get all voices from all aspects of the county.
Okay.
I want to mention one thing about the Dawson School, because this is one of your babies that you have bestowed on me to be a school responsible for. That in two weeks, then we recognized at the 2025 Invest in Rural Communities Conference in Rock, Virginia, a part of the Richmond Federal Reserve, I was part of cohort, and we graduated. And the Dawson Resi, it helped me lift it up as one of the premier partners for my cohort as in terms of support and innovation around rural communities and what could be done. So I wanted to share that with you all, because recreation is a part of this for the southeastern part of the county. Do you have a video that want to share?
Okay.
This is a draft, the final will be shown in August, but I wanted to show you guys some of the work and capitalize on the success of recreation in Halifax County over the last 11 years. I can't believe that it's been over 10 years now since we have started this conversation.
Recreation means everything to me. It's the outcome, and it's a means for a community.
Of course, it's going to mean the traditional ideas that people have of team sports. But it does mean things for people like me, of walking trails, crafting, cooking glasses.
Yeah, force rad, yeah, force rad, when you're on a racetrack, racing your car.
Healthy and believing, longer life, deeper connections with your neighbor. I think recreation touching all of the areas.
I think it's also important in helping have community pride, so that people are proud of where they live it. And that's something that also keeps people in the communities that they're in.
Back in 2018, we had a band name, we were doing food, should be checking, champion for recreation also. And we need to emphasize during the county to do that, and the school was closed. So we asked us to protect the community, this is school, outside, to do a little bit of recreation. And then, we need to contribute to the community, but it is a thing to me.
Had been turned a old elementary school into a place that for our education opportunities is one of the recreation opportunities. That was a huge win for recreation in the county.
I think it's an actual video, isn't it?
It's actually.
Okay, all right. Oh, okay. There we go.
Recreation means everything to me. It's the outcome. And it's a means for a community.
Of course, it's going to mean the traditional ideas that people have of team sports. But it does mean things for people like me, of walking trails, crafting, cooking glasses.
Yeah, force rad, yeah, force rad, when you're on a racetrack, racing your car.
Healthy and believing, longer life, deeper connections with your neighbor. I think recreation touching all of the areas.
I think it's also important in helping have community pride, so that people are proud of where they live it. And that's something that also keeps people in the communities that they're in.
Had been turned a old elementary school into a place that for our education opportunities is one of the recreation opportunities. That was a huge win for recreation in the county.
And Scott, they built a wonderful playground area. That was a momentum moment for recreation in Halifax County.
The barriers to achieving recreation are great.
I would say Halifax County's biggest barrier to access is public transportation. Parents may not be able to drop their kids off or pick them up to take them to different activities. Money can be an issue if there is something that's not free. People may be less likely to participate because they may not be able to afford it sustainably.
I would like to see each town, make sure that they have a recreation as a random in their budget.
Don't bring additional dollars to our community, tourism is a big part of our economy. Recreation is a big part of tourism.
The way we're trying to go about mitigating some of these challenges or dealing with them is really by keeping the conversation going, educating our neighbors, our family members, on what the issues are, and just trying to reignite people's passion for being involved. Being involved is something very dangerous still.
So a lot of our younger people are leaving because they don't have that sense of connection. Providing new spaces like the recreation center, like our library, like having town activities, and just things to help provide a reason for people to feel that they can come back and they can live here, and they can raise their own family here in the future.
Recreation is a part of our life, and I would like for all of us to use their word more frequently and to become more involved in recreation in Halifax County.
Ladies, this is a draft, and just to say, we have done a lot over the last 11 years, and it was reflected in that, in the pictures, the faces, and the enjoyment around recreation, and what it brings and what it can continue to bring. And thanks to you for taking the step to implement a plan for a Parks and Recreation Department. But also it takes all of us in this room together. We just cannot put the responsibilities on one party. It takes us as a county, to keep it together, your organizations, individuals, and of course, the county Commissioners, that we can do this, because we have proven so much that we have done to improve the quality of life for recreation in Halifax County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Commissioners, we have to accept this annual Halifax County State of Recreation Update from Mr. Chester Williams and his committee. Can I get a motion to that effect?
I move to accept the recreation update that was just brilliantly provided by my high school classmate, Mr. Chester Williams.
Okay. All right, motion made by Commissioner Redden is our second. I second. Double second, okay, Commissioner Silver.
I second it, and I just want to add that you did a great job, and I'm looking forward to seeing about six things I got on this paper next year.
Okay, the motion is second, and further discussion, anything else? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thanks again. Appreciate y'all. All right, next item is the action on the public hearing that we had, appropriation expanded to a grant funds for site due diligence, US 301 industrial site. Ms. Catherine Scott, do you have a thing additionally you want to tell us?
Yes, sir. I have in your agenda package a resolution authorizing the grant funds for the select site program, as well as a grant project ordinance for your consideration. You can choose to accept this grant. But as did you consider adoption of that resolution and adoption of the grant project ordinance? I might want to point out in the resolution that it also allows the chairman and other attorney officials and staff to execute all statutes reasonable and very out of purpose of the program. And any future grant project ordinance allows the county manager to sign for any future contracts for those items that we procure.
Okay, all right.
And it accepts our potential vendors, the services for this site.
Right. Okay. All right, any questions or comments to Ms. Scott, Attorney Rollins?
I would, I would just probably recommend that you adopt the resolution separately from adopting the grant project ordinance. They're both before you for adoption, however.
All right, thank you, Attorney Rollins. All right, you've heard information coming from Ms. Scott, as well as the county attorney. Alright, you've heard information coming from Ms. Scott as well as the county attorney. And we have two items there, one is about the resolution, another is about the grant project ordinance. And we recommend we do them separate. What is your pleasure, commissioners? We need to, yeah, we could
What do we attach first?
It's the adoption of the resolution authorizing recreation expenditure.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Alright, motion made, and this is the resolution one, this is item one. Motion made by Commissioner Barris, now second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Silver. In the further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay, now the second one, if it's your pleasure, consider the adoption of the attached grant project ordinance for the selective site readiness program due diligence grant. Alright, motion made by Vice Chair Davis, second by Commissioner Wim. Oh, it was Commissioner Silver, okay, I'm sorry. Y'all know that plan so much. Second by Commissioner Silver. In the further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, okay, very good. Ms. Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman, if I had a coin in my pocket, I'd give it Mr. Wim, let him flip between his company, his, both sides over here. I just wanted to point out, we don't normally have a grant project ordinance with a resolution like this, but this project is ready to roll. And we wanted to go ahead and get both of these things done so we can go ahead and get these things, matters under contract and moving along.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Attorney Robbins. Alright, next item is item D 2025. Y'all hanging out a little bit long, we'll take about a two minute break in a little bit if you, if everybody's okay. 2025 Child Fatality Prevention Team Report. We'll hear from our Health Director, Ms. Cheyenne James. Thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. How do you go through the county management and the community? I have the pleasure of submitting this report here in here to ensure that all those present. So this 2025 Child Fatality Prevention Team Report is submitted to the state, presented through our local board of health. And you guys as well for your information that's bound in our state agreement agenda. Based on the funding that we receive from the state to do this work. So this is a brief overview of the team itself. The North Carolina Child Fatality System consists of four different branches. Two include the Child Fatality Task Force, the Child Fatality Prevention State Team, the Community Child Prevention Team, then our local Child Fatality Prevention Team is housed within the home department. So when we look at the membership of our local team that's housed here in Halifax County, some of that membership does include myself and my director, the DSS director, representatives of law enforcement, school systems, guardians at them, mental health professionals, healthcare providers, EMM, district court judges, and a parent of the child, a child who died before their age in the state. All contributing to the conversations around local child deaths here in Halifax County. We meet a minimum of course, only a year, so that is quarterly. And then those recommendations that are discussed among membership are shared with the state team, which are used to incorporate the local information and the recommendations that can be made at the state level and hopefully changes that can come about through legislation, rules, policies that would remove the safety and the well-being of children here in Halifax County and the state of North Carolina. So I wanted to highlight, you're a woman as county commissioner, in this presentation, as it relates to child fatality here in Halifax County. We ask that, of course, you receive this report and receive the recommendations that are made by the team and the team members. And continue to advocate for system improvements alike. And as well, you also have the authority to appoint members asking to do this. So in looking at the child deaths in 2024, the Halifax County Child Fatality Prevention Team received 13 child deaths that were reviewed. And we identified three specific groups of problems and recommendations for future prevention efforts as outlined in the report. Out as a result of those 13 child deaths, there were three homicides with firearms, eight perinatal conditions of birth defects, one poisoning, and one malignant neoplasma of the brain. So three of the cases that we reviewed were actually tabled and sent to the state for intensive review. And a lot of times, some of these are tabled as will do across county desks with pending investigations as it relates to law enforcement as well. So some of the different proposed actions that I would like to highlight in this report include advocating at the state and federal level for more resources, programming, and funding. Specifically for recreational opportunities, that's the kind of thing today, recreational opportunities, mentorship, and after-school enrichment opportunities for children here in Halifax County. And some of the different accomplishments that we would like to highlight as well in this report by our local team include the fact that our department offers free child seat, child safety, seat training with four certified technicians that are housed within our social work department. We promote safety practices, we say education and prevention here in Halifax County. We have our positive parenting program, which is statewide, and we actually cover two counties within our local implementation agency through the Halifax County Department. We also provide car seats for any clients that are served through our social work department. And we also have a catch my breath program, which advocates and provides education on vaping, smoking, and any general substance abuse information. Hearing the information I provided, I just want to say thank you to the board of county commissioners for giving me the opportunities to present this information to you today. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact myself, the Chair Hudson, or I will be coordinating with this.
Okay, you've heard the information coming from our Health Director, Ms. James. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Silver?
On those three homicides, were they with firearms? Could you tell me a little bit about those three?
Let's see here. So two of those homicide themselves because the information that we obtained, which is of course, sensitive information, specific information to the families and impact their children. Two of those were identified as firearm wounds to the body. And one of those was actually reviewed and turned over to the state for intensive, state review by the team at that level.
And I was just wondering if those are unsecured firearms, something we make it work on and
Kathy Ward went to also part of our team and he also sheds light on some of the work that the local sheriff's office is doing at the local level in the communities as well to combat some of those issues.
Yeah, and that was just one because sometimes churches and people in the communities may see things that can help. And of the eight deaths, what would they relate to?
Yeah, of course, I have a breakdown of that information as well. One being congenital malformation of the heart, pre-homicide definition, birth defects, as listed, fossisted kidney, hypoplastic left heart syndrome, and also embolism, and Edward syndrome. Perinatal condition, which includes persistent fetal speculation, infection specific to the body, unspecified auto mortality, which was associated with respiratory distress at birth or co-sleeping with mom. As we talked about, our agency does provide educational study and death service, which is often times associated with co-sleeping where baby is asleep in a separate space other than sleeping in a separate space besides going with the parents. Infant cerebral palsy, and poisoning and exposure to other unspecified drugs, medications, biological substances, undetermined intent, which we've also turned over to the state for intensive review, and illness. So emphasized cerebral palsy, embolism, and neoplasma.
Thank you. Reason I'm asking is things that we make and help do if it saves one life because I know the rural communities, especially minorities, but just rural, I don't care if you're white, black, or what. Low birth rate and child tritip mortality is up. Something's causing that, I'm just wondering whatever we can do to prevent the one.
Yes, I'm actually going to be answered that as well in my community health indefinite report. And some of the different things that we're doing locally, such as some of those, that's a relation with our local health.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Davis?
You may address this later, but you know, Sid, one of the campaigns was sleep on the back, for instance. But has that changed now to, for side?
So it is recommended that babies sleep on their back up until six months, or they have the ability to go over this again.
Okay.
So that is part of the education that we provide. Smoking is also an additional factor that contributes to the, if there's smoking going on in the home. We also do that program, provide a back and place to each parent or caregiver of a child to give them that safe space to sleep.
We're going to hear from Commissioner Redd and then we'll hear from Attorney Robbins.
Hi, Ms. James. Does your data capture information on suicide attempts in the county?
I will listen to that.
Okay. What statistics can you share?
I will have to go back there.
Okay. Okay, I ask because a lot of my students read about their mental health concerns and potential suicidal thoughts that they're experiencing.
And Ms. James, what you can do, you can provide that to Mr. Everett and he'll make sure that we receive it. Okay, you got something else, Mr.?
And secondly, thank you, Chairman. Do you all do any outreach to speak with, for example, middle school and high school students about their thoughts on fatality or ongoing issues they're experiencing that might lead to fatalistic tendencies or thoughts?
We do not, as an agency, we do identify mental health being one of the great needs here in Halifax County, one of the things that definitely is a big concern. Unfortunately, through the funding and staffing, we don't have the capacity right now to do that. But we do have several different community organizations that highlights all the different opportunities for collaboration as it relates to mental health services and resources that we can provide to those who are in Halifax County. Our social work department offered us a great job, they did a few volunteers, they had some footprints that we didn't have identified, so you can come there and visit them.
Thank you.
Okay, alright, Attorney Robbins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want some clarification on what the board might be expected to do. On, follow page one of your report, there's a table there concerning a couple of the homicides and particularly the second one that's detailed there. There are certain recommendations about promoting Triple P and other early childhood intervention programs. And then a third recommendation about increasing investment and access to resources, but also one about strengthening of gun buyback programs. And then proposed action. Can you clarify what, beyond receiving your report, can you clarify if there's anything else that the Child Fatality Prevention Team is asking the board to do or hoping the board might do? Just in case there's no real focus on that at this point.
Yes, of course. So at this time, we're not asking any action of the board just that you receive your report. These identified recommendations and proposed actions and problems are more so this report is used for state action in the research.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Robbins, and thank you for that clarification. Okay, anything else? If not, we need to accept submission of the annual report from our Health Director. What is your pleasure? Alright, motion made by Commissioner Silver, now second. Second by Commissioner Redd. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, okay. Well, I think you're still up, now, Ms. James, aren't you? Okay, you're next. Item E 2024 Halifax County Health Needs Assessment. She's a wrong one.
She's like, I don't know about economics.
I don't think we received that to put up today. Do y'all have it? I think we were unclear that you were going to actually go over the slides.
Can you, can you just speak for me?
They have them.
Yeah, yeah, we got them on the computer. It's almost got both computer and the paper, so we got it. Yeah, well, okay, that's good. She's, she's taking it back out, okay. I was just going to tell you to darken it, but she's done it. Okay, go ahead, Ms. James. You can just talk about it.
Okay, I'm back to the beginning. So I did watch the number 49th day, the 2023 Halifax County Health Assessment. I'm not sure if you've ever met with us, but I'm a little bit familiar with it. Knowing that some of the G items that you guys were talking about, maybe on the recreation, definitely want to bring this information to you guys. And check on like, sort of the findings that were identified in this assessment. Talk now with the process, yes, that our local health department does every three years alongside the local hospital, being in touch with, in partnership with this So this year, we actually utilized a new partner, been a senior through this week. So in collaboration with 33 other counties in eastern North Carolina, we completed a regional community health assessment collectively. And we started this project in February of 2024. And through that project, had several meetings with those participating counties and their leaderships to talk about what the process of this looked like through our new partner. And in doing so, looking at secondary data collection and analysis, and secondary data being currently existing data that's out there from reputable sources, we're extending actually all that information to utilize in this assessment and this report. And primary data being data that we ourselves in Halifax County were gathering through and from the citizens of Halifax County. We also had a component of our organization, which I'll also get into, that was done with community partners through both the local health department and the hospital. And then the report development, of course, which was completed in March of this year. So I'm looking at the timeline from February until December. This new partner actually stayed on, on track and really exceeded and met our expectations that we've heard times the charm, this is our third vendor. So we're excited about the information and the report that came out of utilizing this new vendor. So in identifying the community, I'm taking a look at some of the demographics that were provided through data from 2023. With the number of persons that reside here in Halifax County, the percentage of veterans and the median age being 43.6 years. Knowing that we have a large aging population, it's really accurate doing things that we are aware of here in Halifax County. Looking at our diversity profile, having 2.4% of sworn in on residents that live here in Halifax County, 3.9% of those that speak a language other than English at home. And then 20% of our population is with disability. And I really want to highlight that disability information, especially because we think about accessibility of local agencies and buildings. We want to highlight that and make sure that we bring everything we can to meet the needs of that population since we have the large population here in Halifax County in comparison to the 13% in the state of North Carolina. Looking at our race profile, pretty consistent as well. What we know to be true about Halifax County with African and Asian residents being the largest population here, residing in Halifax County, followed by our white population and then our American Indian population, considering that we have the third largest child here in the state, the Halifax County child. Looking at the prosperity profile of Halifax County, the median household income being $38,000 in compared to the $54,000 median household income in North Carolina, which is a pretty significant gap. And it's consistent with the rest of the prosperity profile identifiers to include 25% of households here in Halifax County are remaining low poverty levels, which means that one fourth of all households are eligible for the assistance program. And also being consistent with the next fact, which is that 38% of families here and residents in Halifax County receive food stamps or something. And also 9.3% of being unemployed, which recently changed. I remember listening to one of Ms. Kathy Scott's presentations and they have greatly improved that 2023. I also wanted to send the red card to the home insurance status. Considering that the Considering that the largest age group of those that are uninsured are from nineteen thirty-four, I did want to highlight that this information is from twenty twenty-three. We have under normal Medicaid expansion system. And since then, here in Halifax County, we've had about thirty-nine hundred residents just in Halifax County that have been able to obtain health insurance through Medicaid expansion. So I'm excited to see how that impacts our next report. And in looking at those numbers as well, the largest growth for us specifically here in Halifax County was for that uninsured population that might have higher support. So excited to see those changes in a group that has to do. Looking at some of that secondary data, which I also had mentioned, is reputable information that was already existing prior to the development of this report. Looking at the population health model, and I wanted to kind of break down what population health is as well, just to kind of give you guys an idea of what we're looking at when we're looking at these indicators. Population health is the health and will being of a group of people, not one specific person. And then looking at the health outcomes and health factors. Health outcomes being the life and quality of life of residents here in Halifax County. Health factors being clinical care, healthy behavior, physical environment and socio and social and economic environment in which people in Halifax County live and thrive. And our health factors contribute to the outline health outcome system. Looking at our overall health ranking from outcome rankings here in Halifax County, we fall significantly behind, unfortunately, with the national and state average, which contribute to both of those identifying factors of mental health and life. And looking at the health factor rating, Halifax County also falls significantly behind the national base average for health factors. And that being clinical care, behaviors, physical environment and socioeconomic environment, as I mentioned before. And looking at diet and exercise. Halifax County has a lower walkability score and a higher physical inactivity rate than the state average. Since we've been talking a lot about our organization, excited to hear that that is a step forward that the board has chosen to go in and hopefully we'll address some of these problems. And looking at physical health, knowing that residents here in Halifax County have higher rates of various chronic conditions, including asthma, hypertension, diabetes, and have concerns with dental health and the ability to obtain dental health. And hopefully through that Medicaid expansion, like I mentioned, we'll also be able to reverse that. The term infant health, Halifax County has a higher infant mortality rate compared to North Carolina and the US and a higher percentage of low work rates. So looking at us here in Halifax County, this is a critical area for concern of maternal infant health period specifically in the counties and suggested interventions to improve those outcomes or barriers. We actually have double the national average here in Halifax County of number of technicalists. And our percentage of low work rate is really high. We do receive a payment at the health department to address maternal infant health to include our care management for high-risk pregnancies program, the social work, which is intensive care management. Our Wipro program, I'm sure you guys are probably familiar with, which addresses food insecurity and needs for moms, pregnancy support, and then our space group education, which we talked about. We previously used to have a clinical clinic. We currently are in the state of insurance for some health services, unfortunately. We saw the loss of Dr. Sandra, which has been built to drive our family for sure. And it's definitely brilliant to serve for me as a local health director and my staff as well. Looking at substance use as owners, Halifax County, in comparison to state and national average, has a lower excessive drinking rates and rates of emergency work activities related to opioid use, but significantly higher death rates.
That's wrong.
These would act as a follow-up. And when we think about opioid overdoses, we think about some of the work that's going to take place with some of that opioid stuff. Knowing that our local health department houses on the Halifax County, that's what we call it as well, had to steer that, and looking forward to some collaborations to address some of these outcomes. Looking at food security here in Halifax County. Halifax County has higher rates of food insecurity and a higher concentration of bad food restaurants. However, access to food for low-income residents is better and there's a higher concentration of grocery stores compared to the state and national states. So when looking at the child food insecurity rate for North Carolina, we are double that here in Halifax County. But we do have a significantly higher rate of grocery store establishments.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When you say grocery store establishments, do you mean Family Dollar or Dollar General?
I had that same question. So that specific definition is what is identified through the North Carolina data pool as a grocery store establishment. So I would assume that it's a specific.
Thank you.
I did have the same question. Because I know they do have a quality issue, whether it's the best quality, a layer of that. But access to food and established stores, knowing that transportation is an issue, is especially key here. And looking at these figures, considering that we do have a higher concentration of grocery stores, but knowing that access to those grocery stores is an issue, is something that has been identified through these findings. And Halifax County is actually a pilot county for the healthy opportunities provided through Medicaid in North Carolina, which assists with food insecurity, food distribution, and identified or expressed heavily to their local Medicaid providers. So looking at some of the primary data findings through our community web survey, which is also during my paper, a lot of books on the ground went into this project, for sure. We utilized a lot of our community partners to facilitate gathering these surveys and then conducted three separate of these groups as well at three different locations within the county. Looking at the community web survey results, we had a total of five hundred and sixty-two Halifax County residents responded to this survey with the highest group, age group, that responded to this survey being between the ages of forty-five and sixty-five. And the majority of them being women, which is extremely reflective of the community. And we know now that we need to target males a lot more next year. And looking at our respondents as gender. Looking at some of the demographics, overview those that were interviewed, the majority being black, all of our white, and then American Indian, which is also very representative of our target population. So I think we did a good job at kind of ensuring that we spread that information out for as gathering that century, which is represented in the report. Looking at some of the various care that were identified by our citizens. Number one being cost, the cost of care, it's too expensive or that they can't pay. Number two being no insurance. Hopefully, one and two will be addressed through that Medicaid expansion, which I thought found, which thirty-nine hundred people here in Halifax County have been able to take advantage of. And then lack of transportation, which we all know is a major area here here in Halifax County. Although Medicaid does provide assistance for transportation in rural communities, it's just not really fit. And we've been working with the state trying to find a way to mitigate that, but haven't found a good solution.
Why is, why is that, Shayna? Because I know we have contracts in place with, with folks who provide medical transportation. What's the gap?
So one of the things that I've been hearing from our social workers is that the rides will show up late or won't hang around to pump it up or forgive.
Meaning the vendors who are providing the transportation?
Yes, yes, sir. One of the assets, or one of the good things that we provide through the health department, we actually transport patients that express a need for transportation or have issues with transportation on foot. And we are proud to say we have the ability to do that and to about that as a resource. We're reducing that derivative care for our patients.
Is this just locally, or will you all take people to Greenville or Duke if they have a specialist they need to see?
So it's just to transport them to our aid.
Okay, I got you.
Ms. James?
Yes.
I have a deep concern. These numbers, like you talk about the grocery store, we know they're off tremendously. We talk about the fatality rates and alcohol abuse. We're doing great in alcohol abuse, but if you look at the records, there's people down at a four-time rate. But we get down here to end of the survey, if you look at the location, there was primary focus on ECU Health North, Halifax County Health Department, Scotland Nick Library, just like it would have been. Most people, let page fifty, page twenty-four, I believe is. You get to page twenty-four. If you look at those locations, realistically, anybody from Littleton, Hollister, Enfield probably not going to participate at Scotland Nick. Anybody, Weedock, Weedwood, I'd probably not go participate at ECU North or the Health Department. Therefore, leaving out trash and skewing these numbers. So we need to include the county, and I'm going to speak round and round always. District one has been left out. Maybe not intentionally, but it's not in there. We need to improve, because I think this is trash improvement, because I look at this probably proprietary county condition and stuff. It is really good, I'm being honest. But like anything, if we see a flaw and don't point it out, we have to do it to disservice. So just want to encourage you to include those, and you will see those numbers change on acceptance of these. Because we look at the narc use, your guys talked to EMS about narc use. It's being used out in the county. And it's in Hollister being used. And I don't think we in this studies even talk about things like that. So we left that population out. You got a nice report, but you don't have a factual. Better not blame anybody, I'm just saying, it's improved, it's better. I just want us to be better next time.
I'm happy to take that recommendation back and I have identification with you and we're going to do one for you next three years and ensure that we address more than just those three locations. I know that some of the surveys that we've received, we actually have been listed by Zito. We have a, we have representation from every single county in Halifax County. So if you're coming from that part, can we extend on a little bit there? So I definitely take that recommendation back.
Thank you so much.
Now, I was just gonna add, the question about the lack of transportation and vendors and providers. I also work in a healthcare setting that offers transportation as a patient assistance, but it can be very expensive as well. And so what we do in our office is offer like a patient assistance of five hundred dollars. But once that five hundred dollars is gone, then the patient has issues with paying that, that bill. So the transportation can be very, especially in this rural area, to get to the healthcare. I mean, it's a lot of miles between those sites, so that expense, that expense is a major cause for people missing their appointments and just not going.
Yes, man, and oftentimes we're picking up multiple clients at one time when we're going out in the morning to transport and wanting to consider to, previously, we had certain areas that we were going to that were neighboring each other to ensure that, you know, we hit Enfield and Scotland Nick in the same direction for those patients that same day. So if that one side was that day and we needed to do one project in Littleton another day, that we coincided that as far as the transportation. So we should try to be a little bit strategic with that and scheduling patients and scheduling that transportation.
Okay, go ahead.
So going into our focus groups that we conduct in, as you mentioned, we conduct a group, several focus groups, to hear more about the experiences of Halifax County residents. Those locations being ECU Health North, and then that is one of our partners. Here at the Halifax County Health Department and this little Scotland Nick Library, we have twenty-six people humanly participate in those three separate focus groups. And the majority of them being identified as female, or white, American Indian, or black or African American descent. And they represented a wide variety of ages. So looking at some of the common themes that came out of our focus groups, those common themes were employment and income concerns, food access and security concerns, healthcare access and quality concerns, mental health concerns, and transportation and transit concerns. Really consistent with a lot of the findings through some of that secondary data. So looking at a summary and a culmination of all the data that was looked at, secondary, primary, our community survey, and through all of our focus groups, there were six highlighted areas that were consistent among all those forms of communication and data flow through all those various sources, which were mental health and behavioral health, employment and income, food access and security, healthcare access and quality, housing and homelessness, and physical health, considerably chronic diseases, cancer, and obesity. Our prioritization process was done by several different groups to include our board of health, ECU Health North, Lord, ECU Health North. Leadership team, our internal leadership team at the health department, and two agencies, two community groups from each agency. One being our local Halifax partners, and the other being what's previously known as the World Value Community Organization. So in prioritization of those needs, we looked at the magnitude, severity, and size of the impact of the issue. So in rating these issues, how many people are impacted? Whether the implications and the problem is not addressed. Looking at the urgency of solving the problem, feasibility and availability of solutions, availability of resources to solve the problem, and the cost or potential return on investment of those needs identified. The areas that were ranked on by those mentioned groups were mental health, substance use, physical health, maternal and infant health, employment and income, food access and security, healthcare access and quality, housing and homelessness, transportation, transit, and patient. And through the ranking of these priorities, Ascendee actually took all the information that you guys have heard today and created our community health needs assessment, which was revised in March of twenty twenty-five. And you guys can access that in a variety of different ways. I didn't want to give you guys that huge report, but if you have interest in doing it, I'm happy to share it with you guys. So looking at next steps and what we do with the local health department to address some of these identified needs through this assessment process. Through the collaborative process, identifying those priorities, we identified the four listed ones as the ones that we would address in the local health department in collaboration with ECU Health North, being our local hospital, to include healthcare or access and quality, behavioral health, to include mental health and substance use, chronic disease prevention, focusing on obesity, and maternal, fetal, and infant health. So in moving forward with our strategic plan development that we do annually, in my leadership, I wanted to actually move forward in doing it a different way. In the past, what we've done with strategic plan development, looking at these priorities for you with internally only and just for our board of health. We can't address these identified areas and issues just by ourselves. We need to involve other communities, state, other community partners that have the can and means in addressing these things. And it should be a collaborative process, not just a local health. So through that, with our project with UNC, we actually have a practice opportunity that has been sponsored by the state at UNC, that's actually going to re-deep our strategic plan development process. Look at those people who need to be at the table, facilitate that conversation, and also look at different areas in which we can address those concerns. We're also gonna, as a result of this plan, move forward with community health improvement plans, or CHIPS as we call them, which is done six months after the development of this through those with those same community partners that we talked about. And also identify great opportunities and state programs to address some of this work in collaboration with our local health. Now that I've talked a lot, do you guys have any additional questions for me? Like I said, I'm happy to share that assessment with you guys is located in a variety of different places. One to us, the Halifax County government, it was like, I'm happy to get it.
Commissioner Davis?
Hi, Shayna. First, I have to say that she's.
First, I have to say that she's my former kindergarten baby, so very proud of her and doing a good job. From that, being in this position, I also sit on the Trillium Advisory Board. So, what are some things that I can take back to our meetings to say, this is what we need in Halifax County to make sure that our citizens are receiving the resources and assistance that they need? And then, on the same note, how can we, as the county commissioners, help you? What do you need from us to do?
Yeah, of course. So, as it pertains to the board that you sit on the Trillium, knowing that behavioral health, mental health, and substance use are one of the key priorities that we're going to be focusing on for the next three years, I think as we should realize, some of those community health improvement plans will have more actionable items to share with you guys as it pertains to what specifically we've done here in Halifax County to address that. As it pertains to the commissioners, you guys are already taking a step forward in addressing the obesity issue with that countywide regulation. One other thing, too, that's near and dear to my heart is maternal, fetal, infant health. Considering that we only have one OD provider here in Halifax County now, that is a great concern for me. That is a great concern for my staff. We actually sat together with the hospital leadership and the health leadership and tried to find some area of balance to address this issue. What can we do? They were steady trying to hire other ODs as well, but the cost of locals for OD care is extremely high. I guess that's a nice way to say it. The hospital has done a lot of contracting with outside providers that's willing to try anything for coverage. They have actually been in a position where they had a mom come in ready to deliver and didn't have an OD provider to deliver their baby. That is very, very sad. And that's not something that I would want to experience as a first-time mom or as a mom period. And you think about how that's going to contribute to the already wired rates that we have here in Halifax County for maternal and infant health. When considering how we want to move forward with our internal health program and knowing that Dr. Singer was retiring, one of the big things that we talked about in collaboration with Martin County County because he also served their patients at their Health Department was, what can we do to move forward? What is this going to look like? And also with ECU North, I'm thinking that they're in the process of actually hooking their own OD office. So, there is some potential collaboration there. But I definitely see the cry for the child and infant healthcare in Halifax County and knowing that we don't address this problem, it's going to be a detriment to the community.
Okay, good discussion. Thank you so much, Commissioner Silver.
But just one thing, and just as to Shino too, is any way y'all could get out more information about suicide, mental health issues into communities? As you know, we had a student, she won't count as a student because she dropped out and committed suicide. It's real. I'm a member of a veterans organization, and I see very little push-out in these rural communities about suicide signs and different things. So, I travel around the state. I see it to convenience stores, churches and stuff that they have, you know, signs out, need help. Just like we got a group in Hollister. It's kind of like a recovery group. If someone could be willing to come in and talk to them, partner with them every now and then, let people know there's health available. And it's great to hear what you're talking about. And please let us know how hospitals doing. I saw Franklin County lose their hospital, and the county commissioners talked about it a little bit. Next thing you know, it was gone. They finally got it back, but that caused people lives. I mean, I know the people that went there that died or whatever. So, that's one of the things. And it's great to hear what you're saying because it does show that diabetes, we really need countywide regulations as off-the-hook diabetes in our community.
You know, to piggyback on what Commissioner Silver just said, you know, one of the things that all of us can do, everybody in this county can do, is we got to support our Health Department. We have to support our local hospital. Now, if you're not doing what I just said, then you're under the risk of losing it. And so, keep that in mind and move around. I used to be on the hospital board here, I'm not anymore. Ms. Scott is on there, may I know, on the board of directors. And, but that's what you can do. It's simple as that. And if you're not doing that, then, you know, just be prepared for what may come.
I look forward to meeting with you later.
Right, okay.
At the hospital and discuss the results of this community health assessment. We can pay the partner off the roof and make sure that these resources are being spread.
Right. And I'm not hating on Nash County or Gray or anywhere else, but I'm just saying, if you want this hospital to remain in this community, that's what you got to do. You want this Health Partner to remain, that's what you have to do. Okay, with that being said, we have to receive the 2024 Community Health Needs Assessment. What is your pleasure?
So...
All right, motion made by Commissioner Silver's our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb in the further discussion. And also Commissioner Reddick too, but anyway. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? I tell you what, you all on this motion and second thing, yeah? I got it handed to you. Way to go. Thank you, Ms. James. Appreciate your presentation. All right, now this time, y'all, what we're going to do, we're going to take about 10 minutes. Let's be back at about 20 after 12.
This is it.
Fiscal Year 25 Audit Contract, Ms. Duncan.
Good afternoon. You might be here easy today.
We've heard that.
This will be your 25 Audit Contract by Marlon Jenkins. This is our seventh year of working with you. This year will be the implementation of statute and warrants. Now, we're going to expect... Anyway, what this was going to be, now we'll put a lot built in on the book for compensated sick leave. You've always found it very patient, a lot of them, because you're going to take that out. But now, this statute 101, you'll have to come back in and calculate sick leave for all employees who are part of a lot. But as, are you going to use it in your company illness or something of this nature, if you choose? Are you going to use it towards retirement? Or are you going to take it and transfer to another agency, take it with you? So, we have to break the statute of use components, so it's a little more complex. And school government type of class on it next week. Anyhow, so that's been one of the new changes. The Audit Contract this year is a $6,000 increase from the past. Audible cover six major bill books. This year, a $750,000 possibility to make a program. State $500,000. We have several of those which fall in that category. And if it comes to light, that there would be an additional program, hoping it will. But then there will be an extra fee for any of those things. So, that's my presentation today. I'm requesting authorization to get into this contract with Marlon Jenkins.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Duncan. Her request is authorize execution of the fiscal year 25 audit contract with Marlon Jenkins CPAs. What is your pleasure, Commissioners?
Motion for execution.
Motion made by Vice Chair Davis, their second. Second by Commissioner Reddick. In further discussion, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Okay, very good. I do want to recognize Ms. Janet Lewis, CEO of Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for being here. All right, next item on the agenda. Broadband update, completing access to broadband. Ms. Christina Wells.
Hi. Thanks so much for having your agenda back in my items, really, because there's really nothing there. I'd like to kind of surprise it. It's populated on the agenda, but we never really completed the item. We were waiting on some confirmation from NCDIT.
Right.
But, since it is on your agenda, I'm going to give you a quick recap of completing access to broadband. Though we have not received official word from NCDIT at this time. But we'll say mine is easy, because there's no money involved. We always like to hear that. So, as you know, we talked a bit about the fact that we, County of Halifax, currently has a reconnect project. That is in the Hollister community, and that is with access on. We have two great grants currently happening. One with BrightSpeed, one with Five, which is reconnect. And we also have an ArdoF project, which is the one that's charter spectrum, more in the eastern portion of the county. So, now, here comes CAV. We're not done yet. There's also one called LEED that will be coming on the heels of CAV. But at any rate, okay. So, as a reminder, the fortunate part is that the state removed the county match requirement for CAV projects as of November 20th, 2024. So, that freed up some of the ARPA money, ARPA-enabled money that we had set aside for broadband. Because we were waiting for a significant match. It was actually about 35%. It was a pretty hefty match for CAV. So, once they took that away, now the ISPs are mandated to contribute at least 30% match to the total project cost. So, I worked with County Manager Denham, County Attorney Rollins, and the North County Department of Information Technology probably two weeks ago. And we reviewed three proposals, a CAV proposal, one from BrightSpeed, one from Charter Spectrum, and one from Five again, or not. They had very specific criteria, which was great. They provided us a spreadsheet with what we should be looking for, but they did look significantly for county input, which I was pleased with. So, we analyzed each proposal and looked at each company's strengths and weaknesses. And those were related to their financial qualifications, past performance on any other grants, overall experience with providing high-speed internet, operational systems, which was redundancy, what type of technology they used, et cetera, as well as the technical merits, the overall project cost, and the scope of the project for the CAV proposal. So, all three projects were competent, absolutely. But in the end, we were glad to say that our conclusion and that of NCDIT was the same. They waited for us to say what we thought first. And we all thought Five was the lead proposal winner, so I don't know why. Primarily, it came down to the total number of locations to be served, the cost to serve each location, and the cost to the consumer for the high-speed internet. So, the Five project will serve 2,613 CAV locations. That will include 2,194 households, 418 businesses, and one community anchor institution. Community anchor institutions are considered to be either a community college, school, some churches. 100% of these locations are considered unserved, not disunderserved, but unserved. That means they either have no access to internet at the current time or that the speed they're receiving is 25 over three, sorry, megabytes per second, 25 over three upload-download, so less than that. So, that's pretty significant. The cost to serve each location, $1,204. When we had our CAV discussions, they said that they have seen some proposals go upwards of $10,000 per location when you get really far afield distance. And those over in the coastal communities where they're having to dig through sand. So, a cost of $1,204 per location, that was great. Total project cost, $3,243,879. Y'all, I forgot my reading that I said today, so it's going to struggle. Once the project is complete, here was the real selling point for all of us. 93.42% of our county's current unserved locations will be served. That's correct. 93.42%, they were very impressive with that, you got to. Five will provide 100 megabytes per second symmetrical upload-download for $60 a month, and 2 gigabyte service symmetrical for $80 a month. I know we say that that's not affordable for everyone. The fortunate thing is they have an in-house program to provide subsidy discounted services. For anyone who used to qualify, if y'all remember the ACP program, not a Roscomfoyo. It's Cinco de Mayo, I have to pronounce it another. They used to be the Affordable Connectivity Program that they took away. And through that program, most people were paying less than $30 a month for their high-speed internet services. So, Runa Connect Five is offering the same kind of thing in-house. So, that was who we selected from the process. And we're asking if they have any further feedback, but I will let you know. We're waiting for absolute confirmation from NCDIT, and then, and I'm sure an announcement will be made. But we wanted you guys to have the insider information. So, I'll defer to my colleagues if they have anything to add to that.
Okay. Great.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Is he just going to be in the White Oak, Ringwood area?
Yes. The other great thing about the Five project is when, and again, I didn't want to bring the maps because we haven't had our official word yet. I'll be coming back to you to show you actual mapping. But when we looked at it, there were dots for Five, literally from the east end to the west end of Halifax County and everywhere in between. So, yes, significant.
Do you know who the provider may be, who's going to provide in that area?
So, hopefully Five, this Runa Connect. In addition to who's already working, which is an access on.
When you're back at a meeting, it'd be nice if you could see if we could ever have a community meeting. Because some of these people, we got people that actually got businesses, nurses that work out of the house, shops, mechanics, things, they actually have to close their shops in years. They used to have home service when they had to dial up. When they lost the dial up, you couldn't do your car inspections no more. Some mommas doing like Monte Gran, what is it, do the thing to check the babies at home. But some of those services, they cannot provide because it's like an internet.
Yeah. These two projects are going to be huge for the Hollister community. They'll be huge for the entire county. But once this announcement is made, we can certainly suggest that we set up some community meetings. And maybe, since both Five and Access On are serving Hollister, we could have both ISPs come in and talk about what areas they're in.
Yeah, because they need to come down here and picket out almost, and just run out. But we thought it'd be good, and we just kept on like, finishing the day.
Access on, we know we received an update from that.
And the weekly update.
And the weekly update. And it's just, it's still my concern, is this, is this moving so slow? And a lot of that report referred to setting up an office. You know, that money is going to setting up an office. I'm just trying to figure out, how does that, do they plan to have a, that's where you go pay your bill? I mean, is that, was that money allocated for that, that use?
Again, the difficult thing with Reconnect is that that was federal USDA funding, of which we have had very little influence or control. It's not like the Great Grant Program or the CAV Program. We could really heavily involve in kind of, almost in the design, but we're determining where the needs are and how we want this. ArdoF is the same thing. There's been a huge delay in the award, time of the award versus it coming to fruition. They had, the award was roughly 2020, and they've got until about 2028 to get that done. I mean, I know it's frustrating. Five takes a long time to put in the ground. I can't speak to what the parameters of the funding. I know that was over $17 million. I would assume that, you know, setting up office operations, both to manage the project and to be able to serve customers, that's probably in there. Five would take some long time to get into the ground. And we're planning, I've already talked to all the ISPs, to have them come to you in July to provide an update. So, that would be, again, more big questions for you to ask.
And I guess in my area, we're starting to see a lot of signs with Spectrum. So, has that changed to Spectrum?
No.
So, it's just confusing about.
They could just be, now you're talking about like company signs or billboards.
Like coming soon, Spectrum.
Okay.
Internet, I mean, they're like on small roads, yard signs for advertisement. And so, you know, starting to see it in the area. And according to your, according to the report, they've started in Warranton.
Yes.
And they're working their way down into the Hollister side of Warranton, and then over into the Halifax side.
That's right.
But like I said, it's just slow coming, and.
The Spectrum could locate there. They would not be able to receive any grant funding to locate there because, you know, they make sure that there's a lot of overlap in grant funding project. I'm sure Spectrum could come there or come near there. I do know that they're at Lake Gaston, which is very close, you know, to that area. So, it could be advertising or.
And going back to the Five, the Runa Connect, what was the monthly payments you.
So, the 100.
Projecting, I guess, estimate.
Right, 100 megabytes symmetrical, $60 a month. And 2 gigabyte, which is very substantial, very robust internet service, that's $80 a month. So, even at market price, it is very affordable and very competitive for NCDIT. But what we asked for is to make sure it's affordable to all, and to make sure there was some sort of in-house program offered, and there will be.
Tony Rollins.
I probably don't need to even say this, but just to clarify for those in the public who can't keep up with this any better than I can. We actually don't have any county money in the Access On project. But we did enter into an easement on some of Chris's property out there with an old well site where they're going to have some kind of hut. I forget what it's called, but thank you. But beyond that, it's a project we're watching because we're interested, but there's no county dollars in that, like there will be with the two Great Grant projects that we have. And I'm also, like Christina, glad that the state does not require a local match for the CAV project, which we're still looking forward to.
Yeah. So, yes, no, just to reiterate, no county money in Reconnect, that's USDA. No county money in ArdoF, that was an SEC program. Small mountain county match for both Great Grants and no county match for the CAV. So, we're really excited about what's happening. And Access On does do a good job, at least, I mean, the core, at least, they call the reports that they are able to share with you in the weekly updates. But again, we will have all of them come in July, if necessary.
Great, Commissioner Reddick, I'm sorry.
And you said that in this project, 93% of the county will have.
93% of the current unserved will be served by this.
Are those the ones left?
Well, you know, we kind of asked that question, and they are actually, I don't know how public this is, but they said that they're likely at the end of coming these CAV rounds. That there will probably still be some money left. And so, they're going to go back and look at the older providers and see. And yeah, they kind of did this for us. They kind of overlapped with Spectrum, Charter Spectrum, and with BrightSpeed to see what would be left over. Were there any locations that were, you know, were in one proposal that weren't in the other? And there were, especially I think with the BrightSpeed proposal. So, we may be able to come back and fund those. And I think they said that would take our numbers up to maybe 95% maybe would have been over. And of course, we told them our goal's 100. We're going to be here asking, we're going to keep pushing, but do you want to say anything else to that?
The only thing I would add is that there are no counties with 100%, and we told them we wanted to be the first. So, we will still work for that. We're going to aim high, and we want that.
Yes, we do.
Okay, good questions.
Good luck.
All right, anything else? If not, I think with this report, we just to receive the broadband update, no action is needed.
Yes, no action at this time.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Christina.
All right, next item on the agenda, and she's been patiently, 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 patiently waiting. Our illustrious chair of the JCPC, Stephanie Smith, thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your patience.
I used to be here. I didn't think that they had one.
Good morning, County Commissioner. It is both honor and a privilege to stand before you today to request your approval for the 2025-26 funding plan for the Halifax County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council in the amount of $243,016. I am joined today by representatives from all three programs. We do not have one program. We have three programs with Halifax County JCPC. First, we have Mr. Pittman, Operation Free Star, who has been with this county for over 20 years and has served over 200 youth in our community. Next, we have Family Preservation, the Methodist Home for Children, which has been supported, supported of our efforts and served numerous youth for the past five years, which is Mr. John Thomas. And for the first time, I get to report, in five years, we have a brand-new program coming in to Halifax County and under the direction of Justin Moore. Opportunity for youth, and he will be working with Raise the Age Youth from 15 to 18 years old. I'm really excited about that because that was something that was on my list to do this year. Also, in addition to the funding approval, we are requesting that the commission consider updating the age requirement for the youth council member in alignment with the Raise the Age legislation effective December 1st, 2021. We ask that the maximum age for the youth representative be increased from 18 to 21 years old. Next, we are also requesting the removal of four inactive members from the council's membership list as they no longer participate in board activities. The names are as follows: Jane Savick, Christian Scott, Christian Martin, and Terry Buffalo. Lastly, we seek approval for updating the HC JCPC Bylaw Amendment aimed at strengthening council participation in decision-making. As a council, we have identified the need to revise the language in Section 2.3 to more accurately reflect the council's meeting schedule and participation requirement during the fiscal funding year. Although the council reconvenes September 3rd, June, regular meetings related to funding decisions are held in September, October, November, January, and March. Please note, no meetings are scheduled in July, August, December due to seasonal breaks as stipulated in Article 4, Meetings, Section 1. And the February meeting is designated to monitoring purposes only. As a result, there are effective four standard meetings preceding the launch funding meeting for voting. The current bylaws require members to attend at least 50% of scheduled meetings to be eligible to vote. to be eligible to vote. However, given the structure of our meeting calendar, we are proposing to increase to a seventy-five percent participation requirement, three out of four of those meetings. Meeting members will show up for at least four of those meetings, which are September, October, November, and January, prior to voting in March for funding. The proposed revisions not only ensure more constant engagement, consistent engagement and informed decision-making, but will also help strengthen our forum accountability throughout the year. Thank you for your time and consideration of these requests as we continue our shared commitment to supporting and empowering the youth of Halifax County.
Did you endorse that young lady at that point?
I did not.
Okay.
This is Dr. Callow, Dr. Georgie M. Callow. She is the Secretary of Age Without Board. She just makes it happen, she really does. She takes it to another level, I really appreciate her serving as the Secretary with me this year. We have done a lot of corrections and looked at a lot of things in a lot of overview and challenged a lot of people to step up and be accountable on our board. We're not just coming to eat lunch, we're coming to make sure that these programs are doing what they're supposed to do for our youth.
Very good. I want you to point her out because my favorite county attorney here, now, you know what I'm getting ready to say. We were at a conference with this young lady, we were sitting at a table for breakfast one morning, and she walked over and glanced, I both looked at her and said, "Now, who are you?"
I assure you, I think the question was, "Where are you from?"
Oh, boy, that was so funny. But we had a good moment with that, and thank you so much for all that you do, and she really impressed us very well that day she was with us, and, yep, she's tremendous. And the other thing, Madam Clerk, did you get those names of the members that she mentioned a few minutes ago?
Yeah, and someone I'm listening to, Becky Horn, that...
Okay, very good. All right. Now, I guess what you're asking of us is for approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six county funding plan, right? Okay. All right, and thank you for all that you do too, Stephanie, you're just tremendous, you're really, in a lot of ways. Okay? Commissioner...
I wanted to add too, Miss Dennis is one of our most consistent volunteers with Team Port each month, so thank you, as well as Mr. Moore and Thomas, Thomas as well. And I also wanted to hopefully correct the record, Mr. Pittman has been carrying youth around up and down the road since I was a little boy. So how many youth?
I'd like to correct that, there were two thousand youth outside.
I stand corrected. I stand corrected. Over two thousand have been served under Michael Pittman's direction. I stand corrected.
And Mr. Pittman, he's been recognized at state level too by the former, Mark Bassett, I believe, when he was in the Senate. Okay, did you have something, Ms. Davis?
You also requested to change the, up the age limit, do we need to do that?
Yes, sir. Currently, the age is eighteen on the roster. The number changed to twenty-one December first, two thousand twenty-one with Raise the Age.
Okay, we...
Turner Robbins, I'm going to make a request because I wasn't expecting any of these requests that you're making today about changing the bylaws or changing the meeting schedules and that sort of thing, and typically, help me here, County Manager.
Yes, sir.
But typically, we have those things that we review as agenda items before, and I wasn't aware, why was I not aware? Was I, did I say something?
Well, we had discussed it in the last JCPC meeting, but my understanding today was just the funding plan.
Okay.
So if we want to get together and draw those things up, just to bring it back officially for the consideration, we can do that.
And I know, I know in talking to Mr. Pittman and talking to Beth, that there's another matter we want to bring to the board, which is that JCPC as well. Right? Right. So if we can get together on those other things and today just deal with your funding plan for the coming year, we have several things like that, we'd like to put all of it into one package if we could do that.
Okay. Madam Chair, you okay with that?
I'm okay.
All right. With that being said, and I do want to make a note before I take this motion about Justin Pease, Justin, stand up. That young man right there, he and I go to the same church, and I've been knowing him ever since he was, I don't know, fourteen, fifteen, or maybe younger, and younger than that. But anyway, Justin's just tremendous. I have talked with many of the youth that he has in his program, and had lunch with him not long ago, and Justin's is just a tremendous young man. I just wanted commissioners and the public to know that. Thank you, Justin, for all that you do. Okay, with that being said, the approval of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six county funding plan, can I get a motion for that?
So...
Motion made by Commissioner Webb, you've been quiet today a little bit. All right, is there a second?
Second.
I tell you what, this crowd here hasn't been quiet. All right, second by Commissioner Webb. In the further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to go to board appointments. I don't think we have two minutes, right, Madam Clerk? Okay. All right, at this time, the Local Rapids Planning Board received nominations to raise the term limit in real part, Terry Campbell. Motion made by Commissioner Silver, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb. In the further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, like sign. Okay, and the second one is the relevant Board of Adjustments received nomination to appoint an individual to replace John Armstrong. I guess we'll just hold that open for now, and that's it, right, Madam Clerk? Okay, next item, economic development report, Ms. Scott?
Yes, sir. I know y'all have been waiting anxiously for this call to begin, because you know it's towards you. So I'm going to go through this real quickly, I know y'all are tired, and I have closed some items apart. Quite a bit of discussion today, so I will save your energy if I can. So everybody got the presentation before today?
Mm-hmm.
So, Ms. Davis is a little late, and she gets to hear a lot of it twice this week because we have EDC board meetings, so I'm going to go through this real quick. Okay, our economic trends, our unemployment rate, we just got the latest information last week, it's a point eight percent. And here to a year ago in March, that was far from one percent. Almost every, every area saw a reduction. And an increase in labor force, so there's more people working. And this data, this is still from January for unemployed, so we didn't get that data at the time we got the presentation, did the presentation, but we want to make sure we update it. And I'm a God of assistant, I'm in the process of hiring a new assistant, so we did get the building condos for March here, so I don't know what we put those. Not the fault of the building department, I don't want to make that influence. But we did get retail sales, so we're up to date there, and they were at sixty-nine million compared to sixty-eight million. And I want to relate to that because, you know, we've seen some slowdown in the retail sales in the past few months, and even during the months of December, they were somewhat flat over previous years. But we're starting to see a little bit of uptick, and I think it's because of the construction of schools that's going on, because there's definitely a correlation. That hundred million dollar school construction is definitely cycling through our economy, through foothill stays and restaurants and cool purchases and things of that nature. And so that's what I just talked about there, you know, good to see these schools moving forward. But I did want to bring to your attention, because, you know, talking about the schools and then talking about budget, if you look at our top five manufacturing companies in Halifax County, they are contributing quite a bit to our school systems. And I think it's a factor that gets overlooked when you're thinking about the impact of recruiting business or business expansion. You take a Roseburg, for instance. This past year, they contributed over three hundred fifty thousand dollars to the Weldon City School System. That's pretty significant info. But if you look at these top five, that's about one point two million dollars in, three million dollars in tax revenue generated to the three school systems, and you see how it's broken down. And you see that Halifax County Schools is getting less, and the other school systems from these top five, of course, locations everywhere, their tax rate is half of the other school systems as well, so there's relevant data. But I thought that would be interesting to you, to see that the work of the economic development is happening to not only improve our tax base, this Roseburg contributed one point two million dollars to our tax base last year, pretty significant, and to the town of Weldon, the same amount, very significant. You've already discussed the select site readiness plan, Stella Jones, Worldwide Investment Project, I've talked to with y'all previously about that, this information should be completed by the middle of this month. Lots of business updates, you know, we have a new automotive service facility being built by Kentucky Fried Chicken. I get calls every day about what's being built by Kentucky Fried Chicken, so that's what it is, we all know. And, you know, Scotlandex, small businesses are, you know, upholding buildings and new locations and expanding. And then our hotel, we had a meeting with a hotel project, you know, we already have wrong horns coming to that site, and then there's another business that we'll announce later this week, hopefully, that will go there, so lots of good business updates. You know, last month, we talked about single-family housing construction, how that has been increasing and stable over the last five years. We've got new housing, affordable housing, building units under construction, we've got the stateside land project, Hollywood Forty-Eight, Hollywood Forty-Eight, and, you know, it's just fifty-four units of rental housing, it's really critical.
Commissioner Webb, you have a question?
Would it be income based?
Yes.
So it won't be available to everyone?
No, it'll be income based. The ones that we spoke about a couple months ago, out of one twenty-five, that won't be available.
That won't be, okay, thank you.
And they're going to start construction soon, so I'll be giving you an update on that.
How many units, how many units will that be?
That's sixty-seven units as well.
That's one, thank you.
Ms. Scott?
So we need these units, definitely.
So all these units are going to be within the town, municipality?
That's right. They're near, not in the towns, but in close proximity to the towns, in the ETJ's.
Okay.
Definitely, yes, they're going where the population is, that's for sure. Infrastructure projects, we're really making progress on the exit one fifty-four sewer project. I'm having a meeting last week, or excuse me, a meeting before last, with EDA to look at how we can improve the amount of funds that we can get with EDA for to exit one fifty-four sewer, and they agree that if we can keep the cost at about five million, they would potentially contribute as a fifty percent, so that's pretty significant. We've got some other funds that we can access, that support. And so it looks like we're about a million, billion five gap now. We can work in the next few months to try to fill that gap out, we can get this project started moving forward this year. Also, there's still that opportunity to work with Project for Camping House on going. We're trying really, really hard to marry those two, and see if we can get some maybe DQ funding that can help with this project as well. And then Southeast Regional Crescent Authority Commission, they have a notice of funding availability, but will be released any day. We'll apply for the air boss road extension that we could talk them out. We've got a three hundred twenty thousand dollar cap and a one point six million dollar project that we hope that probably will flow.
Now, is that, you said apply, so is that money, do we have to apply for that?
Yes, yes, the town's applicant will be the applicant, yes.
So we're not guaranteed yet?
Yeah, we're not guaranteed, but we applied last year, which will, year before last, but makes us a better candidate. This project they like, but the funding project will make you get a lot of money, so limited project. Truck Driving Academy, President Elliot and I, we sit down and we talk about the need for CDL drivers, and we have companies that we work with, our existing industry, that are looking for CDL drivers, as well as new companies, celebrate maybe nine a year, you know, that they will utilize their business. But having that, hopefully, probably should have impact full, you know, the class is already open, you know, it would be amazing, the reception of that, what driving school. And then Commissioner Silver and I have been in this deep leadership a moment, and we made it through another day, didn't we? And we got one more. And I really believe that Commissioner Silver and that Commissioner from Wilson could really answer all the questions. We can get out of there early next time, so I will make that suggestion, okay? Anyways, we have this is with Department of Commerce this month, and, you know, we talk all the time about winning cooperative and what a partner they are to our economic development efforts, and if we move forward with a building in the future, they're going to be a significant partner in that process as well. So they received the award of Cooperative of the Year, State Marshal Chair, please congratulate you.
That's right. Convisits me.
That's right.
How impressive.
Say again?
He's our convinced me.
That's right, yes, he is. The twenty, May twelfth through sixteenth is Economic Development Week, so if you haven't had your economic development... I always say that, it's a laugh, but we're going to highlight some of our important partnerships. We use LinkedIn as our mechanism to get the word out. You know, we already today did a great post about small business week, which I left some information. I apologize, but these Bureau of Economic Analysis, their data is two years old, and unfortunately, what we have is two years old. But it is pretty exciting to see the role that entrepreneurs and independent contractors are impacting that level of money. So read that information, it is impactful. And we've got our road show, Economic Development Road Show, scheduled for May twenty-first. Don't forget your specialty license plate, please, we're going to try to wind down that process by the end of June, so we've got a shorter window than we've had in the past. And I just put this picture up there because it was so nice to see so many people come out and go pouring their way into the two hundred forty-nine and Road Street and this little lane. Bear brought us fun activity in April, started off slow, but it ended up fast. We've got two visits scheduled for later this month out of these inquiries and the responses we give, and one is in the advanced manufacturing, and the other one is in the lead process. Y'all can read my residency what's ahead, but anybody has any questions, just let me know. And as I mentioned, I do have a closed session item to discuss the laws, so talk about it then.
All right, thank you, Ms. Scott. Yes, sir.
I just want to share one thing, we're in this class, but talking about Powell being in the class discussion. I believe you shared, we had a charge of nursing with bachelor's degrees at the, Doug sits there at the table with me, he's the president of Barton College. He said he's ready to pull the plug and make good work on this. Well, kids go like Nash Community at college here, they go to work at the hospital, they got a partnership, they work two years or four years at their local hospital, they bike the costs or somehow, but end up, the student don't know how to pay to get that bachelor's degree. He said he's openly willing to do that with this Halifax here, to make sure that we have enough nurses. So what's the value of going to these classes and courses? I just asked, we even talked about no money, he said, "I assure you, I can make a half pound of the President."
Yeah, well, thanks for sharing that. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Scott, appreciate you. All right, our illustrious county manager, Ms. Denton.
Well, good afternoon. I will also be fairly brief, as I know we have at least one item in closed session. I just wanted to discuss one item with you, and I can keep it fairly brief, and I may have more information at a later time, but you received some information from the Health Director about some discrepancies with their budget and their accounting between county finance and their own accounting at the department. And I've shared some information with you in the weekly update, the picture they painted is that the county is shorting them, and I want you to know that that's really not the case. They had an overage of cash in the last several years amounting to at one point over eight million dollars in cash. They call that their fund balance, but county departments don't have fund balances, it's just a terminology issue. And so we did pull two million of that back over into the general fund to help our general fund budget for this year. But the county also allocates over three million dollars to the Health Department each year. So just wanted you to understand, I've spoken to Commissioner Webb, who sits on the Board of Health, and we have offered before, last week, to go to the Board of Health and explain the financial, how the process works, and the way the funds come in and out of county finance. So just wanted you to know that... So just wanted you to know that we're aware of that. We've provided them every year with an audit that they admittedly had not reviewed, and it showed that they were in excess cash pretty much every year. So just wanted you to know that, and to know that we are continuing to talk with them, and we'll be going to their Board of Health meeting likely later this month. Did you want to add anything to that, Commissioner?
No. I'll wait till noon.
And that's all I have for my report. We're saving some stuff for closed session. I think Commissioner Davis had a question.
Go ahead.
So if, from that, will there be an next step after this meeting, like just to help support that department? I know the health director is fairly new in that, and I know she came in under an audit and things like that, so, you know, just, I'm hoping that we will be, and I'm sure we will be able to provide any extra help or mentor or advisement.
Yes, we had, we had a two-hour meeting with them last week before the Board of Health meeting, and we are more than willing to do that again, to help them. Most of the programs are not self-sustaining, and we wouldn't expect that at this point. But the county is still willing to make those services happen. They're necessary services in our community, as you've heard today. And there is a need to actually expand them. We've had conversations about trying to get back into primary care for adults, and even doing almost like a walk-in clinic for county staff. So we've had conversations with them, we of course would fund that. But we all need to speak the same language, and I think that's part of the issue, is some of the terminology that they use and what we use don't, don't quite mesh together that well.
Okay, all right. Ms. Davis, you finished? Okay, next item, item nine, excuse me, item eight, County Attorney Report, Turner Oils.
I don't have anything specific to county business. I do want to take just a moment to thank county staff and all who, as they know, over the last month or so, my father, who's ninety-four years old, has had some health issues, and in the last ten days, he was in the hospital continuously until he finally got a placement in rehab, which he was happy to have, and I'm happy he has. So it's been kind of a challenge to be at three places at one time during all of that. But when I first sat down for today's meeting, I got a text from my sister-in-law. It's a photograph of him standing outside of the rehab center where he is, but the first time I've seen him smile in a month. And with his sunglasses on, and I asked her, does he have the keys to his Mustang in his hand? Which he was driving until about six weeks ago, so I just appreciate everything staff has done to work with me through all of that. But nothing for you in closed session or to report at this time.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, very good, appreciate you, Turner Oils, and we do wish you a day in for you to do it well. My heart goes out to Glenn's son, Ryan, when Glenn turned eighty-four, but anyway.
I told Wyatt, we had, we had to live for twenty years.
Okay, on the other business, we're gonna hear from Commissioner Redden about the Junior Commissioners Club proposal. He's got two proposals to do, but that's gonna be the first, and the Junior Commissioner Club proposal. Commissioner Redden?
Thank you, sir. And I'll be brief as well, so I'll prolong the meeting. My first proposal is for a Halifax County Junior Commissioners Club, and the first year would be a pilot program. And this has three primary purposes. I've identified thirteen high schools, whether they're public, early college, charter, or private schools in Halifax County. And we have numerous youth, but this program, to begin with, would propose to recruit about two to three high school students based on recommendations from each high school principal and staff to engage in civic education, leadership development, and community service. The program is proposed to start in the fall of the upcoming school year, so based on my discussions with the chairman and our county manager, we could use the summer to plan the pilot program. The pilot program would have some initiatives, including inviting the youth, when they are available, to attend the non-30 meetings, but most likely, they would attend the 5:30 meetings. And this would not be a time-intensive requirement, because we already have extracurricular activities, they work, some of them have other responsibilities. So we would integrate, hopefully, one to two meetings during the school year. We would also have a job or local government job shadowing date, where they could come after school before 5:00 p.m. So we don't want to keep the employees active hours, but maybe from 3:30 to 4:30, or 3:30 to 5:00, they could shadow local government officials. They could organize some youth lets, civic initiatives. A lot of youth will come to me, their senior year of high school, and ask me, what do I need to do to register to vote, or who do I vote for, or what, how do I get involved in the civic landscape of Halifax County, or wherever I'm going off to college? We could also have a service learning initiative, where we could take the youth, possibly to a food bank, to a senior center, or another community organization, so they could have a volunteer experience. We could also share with them how to, what goes into our county budget, how we're creating this recreation department, so we could get advisement on that from them while we have them. And then we could potentially have a structured debate where they could learn about county issues and debate them in a very organized manner. As far as costs, costs would be minimal, because we will mainly have something for them to eat when they came once or twice a month. I'm thinking more like once a month. And activities that they would do are mainly activities that require their involvement, so we don't have to buy stuff or spend a lot of money on things that would be needed. And then finally, I see this as an opportunity for us to develop a next generation of leaders. So we're talking about retaining, and not only do we want to retain them for their profession, but we also want to show them that they could grow up, and when they take our places, hopefully not some of the, they could take our places. And be the leaders that we've been waiting for. And then, Mrs. Denton had a great idea, and that was to involve stakeholders such as 4-H. So we get involved 4-H, some of the local social studies teachers, and other local organizations who want to volunteer to help us with this project. And I said finally, we're gonna have a formal application process, so we would develop that over the summer. So the students who are recommended would have to apply, they would have to have a piece of 2.5 GPA, show some interest in civic leadership through an essay, that would be a part of the application process. And who's over there? Any questions?
No, I thank Commissioner Webb, done a great job in covering that. I just want to make a footnote that you and the person from 4-H will be the designated officials, you know, and actually serving as supervisors on, you know, to the program. Great job, great idea. Any questions or comments, Vice Chair Davis?
Just comment, I'm willing to help and serve as advisor or whatever you need to do. And also maybe one activity, like you think, maybe we could do like a week, like a governor's stage, they do a week. Maybe we could do something like that, where they're volunteering here in local government agencies, and they could get some volunteer hours and get that experience as well.
We'll have to make a bit on their resume or college application.
Yeah. And I thank Commissioner Redden and Ms. Denton, and of course myself too, mainly the two of them. I mean, they also had in mind not trying to put any more pressure on staff with this thing, you know, trying to create things available during the hours of work and that type thing. And he was willing to step up and serve as a, you know, as a supervisor to this program, so I thought that was well. Anyway, it was a great idea, but you know, we can't, we can't just do, we gotta have your approval in doing it, so that's why it's before you today. So what is your place in regards to?
Good question.
Yes, sir.
I think Gary hinted to something about, what kind of cost are you seeing there? Zero cost, pretty much?
What I was saying is the cost, what maybe we, the food that we would provide to them. And if that becomes an issue, I'm willing to pay for it out of my pocket. Because I don't, I don't want this to become an issue about, we have the money, you know, I'm willing to get the pizzas, the subs. There are people in the community who are also willing to help defray that cost.
Chair, my question was, would it be odd if I'm making motion to move this, but to get in twelve-hundred-dollar budget, possibly include twelve-hundred dollars a year, you don't think we can find it?
We can do that.
Can that be a part of his motion? I guess that's what he's asking.
Yeah, yeah. Put what amount of twelve-hundred a year and then look at it.
We can do that.
I make a motion that we move forward with this committee with a budget starting twelve-hundred dollars, moving twelve-hundred dollars a year for food, materials, supplies.
Okay. All right, motion made by Commissioner Silver's our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb. In a further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, it's your animus.
All right.
Yes, sir. Yes, and I think you're up next, too, you've got another recommendation. And of course, the second one, item B, is not anything new, but, but it's coming back, hopefully. But go ahead, Commissioner Redden.
County manager tried to steal my thunder, she said, this isn't anything new.
The commissioners actually did this before I ever came to the county, and I've been here almost twenty years.
They did.
So it's been a minute, so. But take this on the road.
For this close, I was not on the board then, but go ahead.
But it's cool and easily doable.
So my second proposal, titled On the Road to Halifax County Board of Commissioners, as many of you all know, people approach us all the time and say, I would love to attend the meetings, but I'm working, or my children are at home in the evening, and I would like to come, but it's too far of a drive from Scotland Neck or Hollister. So I have a proposal here for us to go to four sites. One would be in September 2025, Tillery. I've tried to start with Scotland Neck, but Scotland Neck's auditorium needs a group, so they asked us to potentially start maybe next year there. So possibly starting at Tillery Community Center, and then moving to Hollister in January 2026, and Hollister Elementary Leadership Academy, and then to Infield Milk Steam Academy in March 2026, and then to Halifax Community College in May 2026. And based on my advisement from our county manager, she said that based on her assessment, this would not require a lot of hurdles to jump through or jump over to get done. So we would be able to set up and provide access for people to be comfortable. We would have the seating and the setup necessary to handle this operation. And I think it would be wonderful for our residents to see us personally, and to interact with us before the meeting, during the meeting, and after the meeting. And also to potentially, if possible, have a public comment section, since we're gonna be out in the community, that would allow them to share information, or to share ways they want to contribute or make progress. And finally, we would provide a public notice to people, so people would know well in advance that we won't be here, we will be at these sites, so we can make sure we have a good attendance. And I just ask for your support and approval today, so we can plan for this as well to start in the fall. No questions?
Any questions or comments? I just got a couple. One is, to Ms. Denton's credit, you know, she, she had mentioned too, that we would probably have these at a time that was convenient, you know, for citizens as far as, you know how the time changes, it gets dark very quick, but we would try to do it at a time, you know, where it's light, up till about seven thirty, eight o'clock at night, so travel wouldn't be an issue. Now, the other thing that we'll have to, and this board will need to address, is the public comment period. Because, you know, we're required to do that one time a month, and that's the first meeting in the month. And if y'all choose to do a second comment period, which these would be 5:30 meetings, you know, certainly we can do that, but we're just finna need to figure out what that process would be and how that will work. But that's all we're required to do by law, and that's what we were doing as far as public comment. But it's totally up to this board. Turner Oils?
I think on the public comment part, that's pretty simple to handle, because on these meetings where you're planning to be elsewhere in the, in the county, you can simply have as part of your agenda a public comment period, and you might consider expanding it, since that's part of the reason you're doing these at in the community, is to vote a bit more, not too much, because you're meeting in the evenings anyway, but perhaps, it's, there's no issue in just adding that to your agenda, and then when you advertise that you're going to be in a particular community, just to state that it'll include a public comment period.
Well, they need to sign up, like they do at our, at my place.
You don't necessarily have to do that. I think the, the, the reason for having them sign up is to know whether we might have more people speaking than we allot time for typically.
Right.
But I think it's a question of thinking about, how much time do you want to spend on public comment at a community meeting? And, you know, at current time, we're say fifteen minutes, I think, is our usual.
Mm-hmm.
By a total of fifteen minutes, and then you might think about, well, we can expand that to maybe thirty minutes, and not require a sign up, and just have folks come.
Okay.
But you can adopt your own rules about that, or you can just adopt no rules and leave it very open. But it's not, not difficult to flex on that.
All right, Ms. Denton, can staff just think about the public comment part, and just let us know what you all recommend? Commissioner Redden, you okay with that? It sounds like we can do it, we just gotta figure out how we're gonna do it.
I think you can certainly add a public comment even to your second meeting, just have two that month. We'll try to figure out a way to structure it.
I've seen, I've seen minutes back in the old days, when the board was doing this, and typically, a lot of it was public comment. It was kind of, that was kind of the focus.
Right. And I think it's a good idea to have that focus, you know. Okay, all right, with that being said, can I get a motion to that event?
I have one question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So in this motion, we approve, do we, are we also approving where we're doing that? Is that, is that what we're doing?
Well, go ahead, Ms. Denton.
I did leave my microphone on. What we'll do upon your approval, we'll modify the 2025 meeting schedule, because you already have that. And what we'll do is we'll repropose the 2026 meeting schedule, and we'll have to coordinate, for example, with the Tillery Community Center, to make sure that date doesn't conflict with anything they already have going on. And then we'll work with, if we're going to do it at Hollister, to talk with the Halifax County Schools, to make sure that that's something feasible we can do. So at this point, you may want to just approve it in concept, and let staff bring back actual proposed dates, once we work through some logistics, particularly around location and making sure it doesn't conflict. I do have a little bit of concern with trying to livestream in some of these outlined areas, so we may have to get creative with that, but I have an idea that I'll talk with staff about.
We have Wi-Fi in Tillery, Tillery Community Center.
I'm wondering if we could do something different, just because the setup here, we could maybe stream it live via Facebook Live on the county's Facebook page. So that's something we could do. It would be different, but you could still do it that way, and create that access.
I would share, just in the Hollister area, I know our travel center is set up to stream meetings live. We have a camera already set up, and the link and all that stuff established there.
That's a good point.
Just FYI.
Okay, I mean, we could mark those logistics as we move into it.
Good question, Commissioner Redden.
Well, my, my only, I guess my only apprehension at all would be, you know, if our intent is to try to get out in the communities, that's one thing. If our... If our, if our intent is to get more communities involved, that might be, that might be a totally different thing, but we gotta remember that it's just the way it is, well, in the Rock Rapids Littleton Township, that's 68% of the county's population, I think. So if we, from all in the southern part, if we do all this in the southern part of Canada, if we do three or four meetings down there, just one up door, is that really gonna get a large community involvement?
I, I think.
If our intent is to, I reach more areas of community, that's most I got, and that's, you know, you need to reach those different places.
And Commissioner.
Our intent is to get more people involved, you gotta go where people are at.
Commissioner Redden and Ms. Denton can chime in on this, but I think the intent is for both, in my opinion. And now, this is just a start too. Now, nature is probably gonna be totally different, we're probably gonna end up in Melton, probably end up somewhere else, you know, this is just, this is just a start here. And, because I only think Hobgood is on here, is it? See, we may end up in Hobgood at some point in time, so, but this is just a start, we're gonna start it.
And the, and the ruin from the auditorium may be fixed.
Right.
So then, that will bring in conflict to Scotland Lake.
Right, okay. But anyways, to your point, I think, and y'all correct me, I think it's to cover both of those points, and did I mean also to hear from folks too? You have a thing, yes, y'all?
I just got one thing.
Yes, sir.
This is easy. One of my constituents wanted y'all to know, to make sure you do work on the internet, because she has to drive from home to Red Oak to upload her assignment for school at 11:00 P.M. at midnight. I take my constituents to live with me very seriously, don't Elizabeth. That is from one of the young constituents today.
Okay, well, thank you, young constituent. Yes, sir.
So where do we leave the meeting today? Do we need a motion?
Yes, sir, we need a motion, a second, and then.
We're making a motion to amend those two meeting dates that was pending, came over here, right?
No, we're gonna, then before.
Two over in 2026, right? We don't really have a meeting date scheduled for 2026, right?
I would specifically, if I could, make a recommendation that you specifically modify your second September meeting, which I think is September 15th, I had it written down, I don't have it with me. And then to approve the other ones in concept, so that we can work through logistics. I feel pretty good about the September one, just because of the conversations we've already had. It would be your September 15th meeting, to go ahead and modify your meeting schedule, and plan to have it at the Tillery Community Center. And then just to approve the other ones in concept, and we can bring back your 2026 meeting schedule with these proposed dates.
I'll make that provision.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Barr is that a second? All right, second by Commissioner Webb, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, thank you, Commissioner Redden, for those two recommendations. All right, next item, we're going into closed session. Closed session, we have economic development, Ms. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it, Turner Roberts?
I have nothing, I think, did I see closed session minutes?
Yes.
Right, yes, sir. Okay, minutes and economic development, can I get a motion for that effect?
Motion. Motion to go closed session.
Okay, motion made by Vice Chair Davis, that a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Commissioner, if you all stay put, we're gonna try to go ahead and get through this thing, we're just asking, folks are not supposed to be here, thank you all for coming, and...